That was weak. Hold on. There you go. I would like to call the Calwright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on May 21st at 9:04 a.m. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Teri Lucas, the board liaison at Calwright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on Board Docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calwright.org/board. For attendees who wish to make public comment in person, please fill out a public comment card and submit it to me. For attendees who participate remotely, please use the Q and A feature on Zoom to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded.
Thank you very much, Teri. We received a request from trustee Lovadu to appear remotely. Pursuant to AB 2449, the board is permitted to allow a member to participate in the meeting remotely due to emergency circumstances. Trustee Adu requested to appear remotely due to a family medical emergency, which prevents her from attending in person. Is there a motion to approve trustee Adu's request to appear remotely due to emergency circumstances?
Move second.
I heard Shane. And who was the second? Villa Vicencio. Thank you. Before we take action, is there any trustee comment? Hearing none. Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Teri. We will now vote on the motion to allow trustee Adu to attend this morning's meeting remotely. Teri, please call the roll.
Lovadu. Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Mary Salas. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Teri. Trustee Adu, are there any other individuals 18 years of age or older who are present in the room with you? And if so, what is the general nature of your relationship with these individuals?
There is nobody over the age of 18 with me.
Thank you, trustee Adu. Teri, if you could please call the roll.
Lovadu.
Here.
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Present.
Adrian Brown.
Present.
Casey Chang.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Present.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pam Haines.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis. Harry Legrand.
Present.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Mary Salas. Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Here.
Los Villa Lobos.
Here.
Joseph Williams.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Teri. The next item is the discussion of the order of the agenda. No changes so far, right, President Menon? We're heading in order. Excellent. And that takes us to 1.4, which is our president's report. Oh, darn. I skipped the pledge. All right, just kidding. We will now proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Trustee Villa Lobos, will you lead us in the pledge? Excellent.
Please place your hand over your heart and begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next question.
Okay. Getting back on track here. There were several awareness months that we elevated yesterday at the Board of Governors meeting, but I wanted to highlight one in particular here. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And Calwright does a wonderful job of supporting its students and its staff with mental health. So for the resources for employees, there is an Employee Assistance Program, EAP, that provides mental health support, legal support, financial support, and so much more. And as far as resources go for students, I was so impressed, President Menon, with what's on your website. There's a section under the Support Services and Resources page that talks about wellness services in particular. And I wanted to take a moment to read it out because it is so important. Calwright provides students with wellness services through timely care. Wellness services include on-demand access to medical services for common illnesses, mental health services, and self-care content. Through timely care, actively enrolled students have access to free, confidential, on-demand mental health support, medical services with a board-certified physician and digital self-care content 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Additionally, to actively enrolled students, actively enrolled students can schedule up to 12 sessions a year to speak with a licensed counselor. There's so much going on in the world. And it's so great to see that Calwright is supporting our students and our staff and faculty in this way. And that's not it. On this website, on this webpage, this landing page, there is more. There's, in addition to the wellness services, we're talking about academic tutoring, immigration, legal services, and accessibility services. So I wanted to elevate that and give a shout out to the team for making sure that our students and our staff and faculty are supported in that way. The other thing that I'd like to talk about in my remarks is just to bring our team here up to speed with what happened in last month's executive committee meeting. So as a courtesy to you all, I will just read a couple remarks on what the board approved in that meeting. The board approved the following. An addendum to the MOU between Calwright College and the University of California, Irvine, extending the term through June 30, 2028, and increasing the total value of the agreement by an additional $1.8 million. Course outlines are record for two courses within the nonprofit leadership program and two courses within the generative artificial intelligence program. Lastly, for the 2025 California Community College Trustees Board election, the following candidates were determined for whom the board casts its vote. Jose Alcala from Riverside CCD, Inez Deluna from Napa Valley CCD, Uduak Joe Untuk from Long Beach CCD, and Tammy Silver from Pasadena area CCD. For information and reports, Dr. Tamika Connor, the Senior Vice President of Strategic Initiatives, and Dr. Samuel Lee, the Senior Advisor to the Chancellor for Credit for Prior Learning and Chief Ambassador MAP Initiative, provided a report highlighting Calwright's leadership role and the Mapping Articulated Pathways Initiative, which advances credit for prior learning opportunities across California's higher education system. And Edward Lee, our Chief Financial Officer, provided a report on the 2526 budget process and timeline. As far as constituency reports went, Deb Hemingway, the President of the Associated Students of Calwright College, provided an update. And that's all. This concludes my remarks, and I'll pass it on to President Menon.
Thank you, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the Calwright College Board of Trustees. Before we begin, I did want to take a moment to recognize Member Casey Chang for her incredible contributions and dedicated services to the board over this past year. At Calwright, as you know, we value the student voice, and it is such a critical part of helping us navigate towards better serving the needs and the goals of our learners. And it's been your perspectives, your views, and your voice on the board that have really helped to elevate that even further. So thank you so much for your service and wishing you the best of luck in everything that comes forward from here. The Student Compass is a tool at Calwright that Calwright and higher education institutions across the country have to continue to utilize and listen to in the coming months and years. So as we navigate through particularly this period of economic uncertainty on a national level, this unfortunately transcends to the California level, impacting our state budget and constraining funding available for critical resources for the populations that we serve at our institution. As Governor Newsom released his May revise last week, we know that today, what we know is that deteriorating economic conditions from some of the recent national policies are deeply and disproportionately affecting California. So what went from a modest surplus in the fiscal position of the state in January is now a $12 billion deficit for the state in the next fiscal year. Despite this extremely difficult fiscal climate, we are grateful that Calwright is still currently flat-funded in the governor's budget for this upcoming fiscal year at $15 million per year. And we're also holding on to our remaining one-time funds for continued use in the upcoming fiscal year. But as we've been continuing to meet the needs of the state, Calwright is a different college than we were at our inception. With more than 7,400 students in 57 of 58 counties and 1,400 certificates awarded, the continued need to scale to serve the needs of adult learners across the state in this fiscal year will be extremely tight without increased funding. So as we navigate this year's budget cycle, we continue to advocate for our learners and our work with the governor's office to underscore Calwright's alignment with the state's priorities and also to formalize a long-term funding plan for Calwright beyond this fiscal year. Because of our model, Calwright is uniquely positioned to support the governor's efforts and investments around the state's master plan for career education and what the governor highlighted himself in his press conference on Wednesday as a priority. Skills-based mastery beyond the traditional academic learning as one of the gateways to economic opportunity in the state. That is the very bread and butter, as you know, of what we do here at Calwright. Calwright leans into, as the governor himself put it, valuing what our students are great at and adding on to those skills so our learners are job-ready. We best position our students for the workforce by providing them opportunities to gain hands-on work experience while also building robust portfolios that contribute to sharing the value that they bring to employment opportunities and that ultimately lead to the kind of economic mobility we need in the state. By emphasizing that demonstration of skills over academic proficiencies, we enable learners to showcase their capability in applicable ways that resonate best with employers. And we exist today as a truly powerful demonstration of a unique and innovative model that responds to what our adult learners need. We have regularly delivered on what the state has asked us to do in building Calwright, and most importantly, where we stand today, which is building a strong organization that has tried and tested with the knowledge, skills, and capabilities to do what the state needs in this moment, but more importantly, to do what the state needs into the future. To do this critical work, we have been actively engaging both the state legislature and the governor's office to advocate for a sustainable funding approach that honors the flexibility and the support that our learners need. It maintains affordability and allows us to grow to reach and impact more learners who need us beyond this year. And we will continue our tireless advocacy for our learners within the Assembly and the Senate in the coming weeks and months. As we await further information regarding the budget, we continue the necessary work to meet our students where they are, especially in these kinds of times and times of economic uncertainty. Because it's in these moments that we've seen an influx of working-age Californians flock to our programs as a means to upskill. During today's meeting, you will hear an update from the Vice President of Sustainable Growth and District Development, Marissa Bold, Tom Tash of Ideas 42, regarding our multi-year partnership with UC Irvine School of Education. And most notably, I wanted to highlight that this research partnership has and continues to drive student outcomes by leveraging data and behavioral science strategies. Today, we're going to see how some of those ongoing initiatives have increased student persistence and retention. And we'll also look to the future pilot within this partnership that focuses on ensuring students can access and utilize the public benefit programs that are available to them, further allowing them to focus on their studies and their life responsibilities that can only be accomplished if their basic needs are met. It's a pleasure to have with us Kathy Senderling-McDonald of Catbird Strategies, who has also been a really strong leader in this work. I'm thrilled to also have our partners Mara Woody and Eleanor Buxton from Ripen here with us today, as well as Najah Adams from Tech SF to underscore the importance of real-world work experience for Calwright learners. And Dr. Shannon McCarty, our Vice President of Learning and Instruction, will lead an information session on how work-based learning helps our students move from education to employment faster and more effectively, preparing them not just to get a job, but to thrive in their careers. As the student connection to in-demand skills is central to Calwright's model, innovative initiatives like the California Workforce Accelerator or apprenticeship partnership with Tech SF and Career Bridge projects with Ripen demonstrate our commitment to integrating real-world experiences into that student journey. And as we build more workforce partnerships and see the demand grow for Calwright's model, I'm also proud to have been invited to serve on the Cben National Board of Directors of the Competency-Based Education Network along key leaders in this space that are guiding the direction of the future of higher ed and the future of skills-based education that's preparing learners for this dynamic economy. Earlier this month, I had the opportunity to gather with the Cben Board, which is really a brain tough trust that I'm lucky to be a part of, of thought leaders from everything from the corporate learning and development environment to former Department of Labor leaders and leaders who are at CBE-focused institutions. While we know that there are rough tides ahead, a resounding theme of our discussions was about how CBE is a central solution to many of the challenges in higher education right now and in those that we anticipate in the years to come. And it's evident to me that California continues to be a leader in this space as Calwright is a proven and scalable model to drive adult learner success, not just within California, but across the country. And with that, I will conclude my remarks. Thank you to President Agüinaldo and members of the board.
Thank you very much. Team, we do not have a closed session today, so we move swiftly into Section 3, which is our consent agenda. Do any of our trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or separate vote? Hearing none. Any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Thank you. Teri may have a motion.
Move consent.
Thank you, Member Haines.
Second.
Thank you, Member Legrand. Teri, may I have a vote?
Lovadu.
Aye.
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Agüinaldo.
Oh, thank you very much, Teri. We are now in our Action Agenda Team on Item 4.1, which is to adopt a Resolution 2025-02 celebrating Classified Employees Week. And for that, I'll pass it to Joseph Brumgartner, our Vice President of Human Resources.
Good morning, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, members of the board. In 1986, the California Senate Bill 1552 established the third week of each May as Classified Employees Week. And in order to recognize the vital contributions of the classified employees, since that passage of this bill, boards and directors and trustees have been asked to adopt formal resolutions. And with that in mind, today, I'm here and proud to be here to ask you to approve and adopt Board Resolution Number 2025-02, recognizing the third week of May as Classified Employee Week.
Thank you very much. Any trustee discussion? Member Haines.
I just want to say that how important our classified professionals are, and especially at Calwright, relative to the work that they do, sort of beyond sometimes what is called upon generally. And it goes without saying that they are an integral part of the success of Calwright. And it's important that we recognize them so.
Vice President Rawlings.
So as a 32-year classified employee, this is always appreciated. You know, we don't always have, across the state, we don't always have administrations that really recognize and appreciate classified employees the way that we do here at Calwright. And so I just want to say thank you to our team here at Calwright, but also to our classified employees at Calwright, just expressing how appreciative we are of the work that you do. I know it just firsthand. And just really thank you for everything you're doing for our students. It's a new model. It's different than maybe other colleges across the state will be how they're doing their work. And so you're at the cutting edge of everything we're doing for the classified service. So we appreciate you, and I'd like to move the motion.
If I could, I'd like to second that.
Wonderful. Beat me to it. May entertain public comment first.
There is no public comment.
Thank you, Teri. And if you could call the roll.
I'm sorry, President Agüinaldo. I just received a public comment.
Sure, please.
From Mike Palomieri. As a classified employee at Calwright, a big thank you to the board for adopting the Classified Employee Work Recognition Resolution.
Thank you.
Lovadu.
Aye.
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haines.
Aye.
Harry Legrand.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Agüinaldo.
Thank you very much, Teri. We move to Item 4.2, which is to approve a one-year T-Mobile Agreement for Internet Service and Subsidized Hotspots with two optional renewal years. So I will pass that one to Vivek Vias, our Chief Product Officer.
Good morning, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Vivek Vias, Chief Product Officer, Calwright College. And I'm here today to seek your approval on a one-year T-Mobile Agreement for Internet Service and subsidized hotspots with two optional renewal years. To give you some background on this request, but before I do that, I'd like to, with your permission, make a verbal correction to the dollar figure that's listed on the agenda item. I realize I made an error in listing that here. It should say $450,000 instead of the $375,000. Calwright College provides internet hotspots and devices to students upon request. Currently, about 41% of our enrolling students request these resources to ensure critical access to Calwright's programs and scaffolded support services. Hotspot provisioning addresses a vital digital equity gap by enabling students without reliable internet or devices to fully participate in their learning. It also supports the development of digital literacy for those who may be navigating online learning for the first time. Timely provisioning is essential for students to engage with coursework, access support, and make progress towards program completion. Over the past year, the technology team has improved the provisioning process by automating order placement, return requests, and reporting, resulting in measurable cost savings and more efficient use of purchased internet lines. Calwright procures these hotspot lines from T-Mobile through the National Association of State Procurement Officials, or NASPO Cooperative Agreement. But each purchase requires agreement to terms, often causing delays. To address this issue, Calwright seeks approval for a one-year agreement with T-Mobile with an option to renew for an additional two years and not to exceed purchase amount of $450,000 for up to 2,500 additional internet lines in fiscal year 2526. This estimate reflects projected usage based on enrollment growth driven by new program launches and increased outreach. An annual agreement with option to renew for two additional years will streamline procurement, reduce administrative burden, and provide flexibility to scale the number of lines based on student demand. This will help ensure timely, uninterrupted support for students while allowing college to manage resources more effectively and align technology services with evolving institutional needs. And so with that, I seek your approval on the one-year agreement to authorize the purchase of 2,500 additional internet lines for an amount not to exceed $450,000 for fiscal 2526. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Vivek. Any trustee discussion? Member Haines.
So let me first say that I think that it's critically important that the method that our students are learning, that there is access to these devices, hands down. It's a critical, it's extremely critical. But I do have a question relative to those students who start out, may go a month, may go two months, may go three months. They have the device. What is the return rate relative to that? I just want to have an idea. And if you have that answer, that would be great.
Yeah, so that's a great question. Right now, it stands at about 20%. And some of the automations that I talked about in the background that I provided, we're putting a lot of automations and campaigns in place to increase that return rate. We do realize that our flexible model requires that we have that flexibility for them to retain the device to be able to complete their programs. But at the same time, we want to recover those devices when no longer needed by the students so we can utilize it for newer students. So we're putting checks in place to increase that return rate.
And then if you could speak to those devices that are returned, do they tend to be returned in a way that they can go back out? Or are they so used that even if we get them back, that their usage rate may not be at a level where it could be re-sent out?
Fortunately, the condition of the equipment that we get back, when it comes to the Chromebook devices, is really good so that we are able to utilize it for other students, new requests. And for hotspot lines, it's a hotspot device And for hotspot lines, it's the hotspot device that is returned by the student. And because these are relatively new devices, same applies to those devices as well. So we have a an extremely high rate of reuse on on all of our devices that are returned by students.
All right, I feel like I need to do a disclaimer. So thank you for the information. What I, okay, so I'll tell you what my, the regardless of what that is, and I just this is how I feel, it's the price of doing business. And it's it's the price that that we need to continue to look at. And obviously, we need to do our due diligence to get equipment back that can be used by other other students. But at the end of the day, jeopardizing anything relative to that piece of it would be wrong in my in my estimation, because that is the gateway for our students to be successful in this kind of model. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Trustee Brown.
With this expense, is the device itself, what's costly? Is it more so the service?
It's actually all towards the service. So we, the terms that we've negotiated with T-Mobile, the the actual cost of the market price of the device is $90, but it is subsidized to $0 with a term commitment of 12 months. So we get the device for no cost to us. So it's only the service line, the subscription subscription cost of the internet access on a monthly basis.
Okay, so if someone didn't return that zero-cost device, you would just turn off the service on that particular device?
That is what we're doing when it warrants that that step to be taken to save the costs for Calbright.
Okay, that's great. I think this is really important for accessibility, particularly for our rural students in those hard-to-reach areas that we're still trying to build and where there are digital divides. And so thank you for this. Oh, and I'm also thinking about the students that are living out of vans and cars and things like that. This is going to be really essential to give people access to be able to better their lives.
Absolutely.
Trustee De La Fuente.
Thank you for being here today. I have a question. What can we do to get a better deal? Could we get better pricing? Are we getting the best deal? Can we throw in some more lines? What can we do? Could you match competitors' offer? How do we, how do we really create more value for the students?
So we have had a several weeks of negotiations with T-Mobile to make sure that we get the best deal, not only in terms of the fully subsidized device, but also in terms of the term commitment, although we tend to reutilize the lines when they are returned to us. But we want to make sure the term commitment was small enough where we are able to take the step as I just provided in my response. So to get the best savings for us. So we're getting the educational discounts that we need. It used to be higher. In the past, we negotiated down to what is essentially now 50% of what it used to be. So it used to be $30 a line, and so we negotiated down to $15 a line. So we are getting the best deal that we can, but we're always looking for better cost and cost savings. So we continue to look at other providers if there is an opportunity to save any.
And maybe could you throw in some more lines or?
I will just say, like, I will, I think it's important to credit Vivek with having progressed the deal-making this far in his efforts, because I think it is his considerable experience and in dealing with similar types of contractors and other settings that has allowed us to achieve a lot of the cost savings and drive the hard bargains that we have been driving, including not just leveraging agreements that are available to us, but the things that actually are the deals and the ways in which the flexibility in the contract gives us opportunity to better control and manage, not just device access, but access to the actual lines, which is what triggers payments. So I will just, I will say, you know, we're always looking for the best deal. That that much is true. But also, I just want to acknowledge Vivek, your leadership and the progress that we've made on the cost-saving side of this work to allow us to kind of stretch the dollar.
Thank you, President Mina. I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go with Rawlings, Williams, Epstein, Villa Vicencio.
So just really responding fairly quickly to Member De La Fuente's point. I actually run a program for this in-house at Mount San Antonio College. This is actually a really great rate, and we're doing it. So this is a better rate than we're getting, and we're doing it in-house. So I think I need to go back to T-Mobile and start asking, like, can we get the deal Calbright got? So so congratulations. It's a it's a good plan, a good rate. Thank you.
All right, trustee Epstein.
Oh, it was Williams.
Okay, trustee Williams.
So I'm supportive of the initiative. I just want to make sure that we don't duplicate efforts, because California does have broadband for all. And, you know, it would be important to really look and make sure that we are getting the rate that the state has already negotiated, because all across the state, folks do have access to affordable internet access through the broadband for all. And so I just wanted to make sure we compare. And then there's also funding opportunities through the state for broadband for all. And it is a governor's initiative. And so it's important that we, if we have it aligned, or make sure that we're accessing that just for, you know, long-term sustainability.
Thank you for that comment, actually, because we've been, over the past couple of years, increasing tighter coordination with the State Department of Technology in their efforts statewide, not just to expand broadband, but to address the range of issues associated with digital equity. And I will say, unfortunately, in this moment, we find ourselves in a situation where the state has an incredible plan and an incredible strategy, an incredible group of community partners across the region, and Calbright is a statewide partner in these efforts. And we were denied access to federal grant resources that the state was anticipating receiving to begin the process of implementing parts of that digital equity plan, including a whole set of discretionary grants that individual entities like Calbright and other folks at the local level and in in high-need areas of the state were no longer of access to, because they're not moving forward with such a critical set of investments at the federal level. So absolutely, we are in an alignment and coordination. And also, it is disappointing to see the fact that the state was well-positioned up and down the state to address some major issues that the state was experiencing, it continues to experience in terms of digital access, and those resources being denied California.
Trustee Epstein.
Yeah, I, something that Member Brown said caught my attention. So so we give devices and this internet service to our students. And so if if they don't return the device, we turn off the internet service. But do what happens to the devices? And are we keeping track of how many devices are not being returned? And what are the devices exactly?
So it's a it's a hotspot device that lets you connect to the internet. It's like over a mobile network.
So it's not the actual, it's not the tablet?
No, no.
We're talking about.
So those, that's a separate item.
Yeah.
That does get requested also, which is a Chromebook.
It's just the, I see.
Yeah, it's just a hotspot device. And, yeah, and and the, once it commits, completes a 12-month term, which our lines, because we're reusing the lines, it tends to be not an issue, but because that's how their agreements are laid out, we, once the 12-month term is completed, the device, the line can be canceled without any clawback for the device price.
I know this isn't on topic, but do we have a an accounting of the devices that we've given, the the tablets that we've given out? And how are we doing on, on, you know, retrieving those when students are finished and that sort of thing? Is is it something you're aware of?
Yeah, so right now, we stand at about 3,375 internet lines. So about roughly about 41% of our enrolling students tend to request devices of either one or both Chromebook plus hotspot, or even individual Chromebook or individual hotspot. And our our return rate currently stands at 20%, which is something that we're working actively on through our automation and our campaigns to get a higher rate of return on those devices.
And so the return rate is 20% after they're finished?
Yes. Right now, it stands at 20%. But what we are doing right now is we're running campaigns, and we're also canceling. So if the line, some of the lines which are older, we've gone through all of our data, and we recently canceled 1,692 lines. So this is the process that we're putting in place now, so that if we do not get the device back after a couple of attempts, we're going to take the this step to, so that it does not continue to be a cost for us.
I just wanted to clarify. I think the hotspot is about the size of this device, and it's probably less than $50. Is that right?
The market price is $90, but with a 12-month term, it becomes subsidized to $0 for us.
Okay. $0. Okay. Trustee Villa Vicencio.
Yeah. Part of that question was already asked. I was going to ask that again, the percentage of the students who actually use the hotspots. But thinking of future enrollment growth, it looks at contracts as an additional 2,500. Will that be sufficient, given, given the the outlook of the amount of students that you have? And just wanted to see ultimately with your next contracts, whether or not that's going to increase in the future. Thank you.
So that calculation is based on some of our projected enrollment and program launches. And because we're trying to improve our return rates, so taking that into account, we came to this number, that this should serve the purpose in the next fiscal year. So it's a not, it's an up to 2,500 devices. And that's how we wanted to write this contract as well with T-Mobile. So it gives us the flexibility, so that we're not committed to a fixed number, and yet have the the option of going up to 2,500. But that 2,500 number is taking into account the enrollment growth, program launches, and a higher rate of return, which we are actively working towards.
I appreciate the clarification and the strategizing, so we won't not have hotspots for students who really need them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Well, I'll take public commentary.
There is no public comment.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Thank you, Member Hanes, Member Chang. Terry, if you could call the roll, please.
Love, adieu.
Aye.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo Dila Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Hanes.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. We move to item 4.3, which is to approve an amendment to legal services agreement with the law firm of Lozano Smith LP. And for that, we welcome Wanda Daniel, our general counsel.
Good morning, President Aguinaldo and members of the board. This item is before you requesting your authority to exercise the first of three one-year options that was, that were included in a legal services agreement authorized in the year 2023 with the law firm Lozano Smith for supplement legal services. The not-to-exceed amount authorized under the original agreement is $200,000 per year. The term of the original agreement is set to expire at the end of June, June 30, 2025. And so this option, exercise of this option is necessary to extend the term for the additional year. And we're requesting a not-to-exceed amount of $200,000 consistent with the original agreement. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Wanda. Any trustee discussion? Hearing none, we'll take public comment.
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Terry. May have a motion.
So move second.
Thank you, trustee LeGrand. And trustee Williams, Terry, if you could call the roll, please.
Love, adieu.
Aye.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo Dila Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Hanes.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Los Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries President Aguinaldo.
Thank you very much, Terry. We move to item 4.4, to approve an amendment to the SOVA contract, extension and increased funding. And for that, we welcome Tavika Connor, our SVP of Strategic Initiatives.
Thank you, President Aguinaldo. I am seeking the board's approval for SOVA Solutions and extension to their contract. SOVA Solutions is a nationally recognized consulting firm specializing in higher education policy, regulatory strategy, and change management. The firm has deep expertise in navigating complex education systems with a track record of supporting colleges, state agencies, and advocacy organizations across the country. SOVA's team includes former education leaders with expertise in California policy and regulatory environments, making them uniquely qualified to support Calbright. Their approach combines technical policy analysis with collaborative problem-solving, helping institutions like Calbright build strategic pathways through regulatory barriers to enable innovation and student success. In August of 2024, Calbright entered into a contract with SOVA Solutions to provide expert help navigating California's higher ed policy and regulatory environment. The original scope of work focused on analyzing key regulatory challenges, which has already led to important insights. As required by its enabling legislation, Calbright has created a support-forward, flexible, online, competency-based educational model tailored for adult learners. Now it needs to broaden its scope of work with SOVA to develop, to help develop recommended regulations and policies in alignment with its enabling legislation. These regulations should support asynchronous, direct assessment, competency-based education to better serve adult learners by offering flexibility and affordable learning opportunities. The proposed amendment would include a new phase of work focused on additional regulatory work for Calbright and the broader system, a new consultant with expertise in state regulatory education code, and provide guidance and support through the state approval process. Therefore, in conclusion, I am seeking the board's approval to extend our contract with SOVA Solutions and increase the funding of their continued work with Calbright College. This increase includes a contract amendment not to exceed $55,000 through December 31 of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any trustee discussion? Member Hanes?
You, you, I only just pressed the button.
I saw it.
Oh, my God. Okay, all right. So without giving out any Calbright secrets, I'm just, no, because, you know, I worked in the legislature and and I actually dealt with ED Code. And it had, ED Code is the largest code sections in the entire system. And when I went into the legislature as a legislative advisor, one of the things that got said was, there's only five people in the state of California that can actually tell you what's in the code, because they helped put it there. And most of those people are now dead, okay? Or, no, that's, I mean, it really, that part is true. And so.
You said it.
No, but, no disrespect, no, no disrespect. And so I know the importance of trying to really navigate all of that. So I'm appreciative, absolutely appreciative, that we are looking for for folks that can help explain and and talk about the pitfalls relative to the code sections. And so I think this is really, really a good idea. But if you can kind of share, and I also know that competency-based education, for the most part, isn't anywhere in those in those code sections. And so it's, this is a crit, a critical step that Calbright absolutely needs to do. But if you can share something kind of a bit more than that.
Yeah, I'm happy to. Not so much a secret sauce, but a recognition around the complexity that you've given to not just the individual code elements and how they're structured and what model they're primarily structured for.
Yes.
But it's the intersectional nature of a lot of those requirements. So we have a set of responsibilities under our specific governing statute to develop, to have developed over the past few years, a particular model that met a format that is incongruent with many of the traditional structures and even compliance functions that are response, that 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 apply to some of the more traditional models and that were imagined in the law, as you artfully pointed out decades and decades ago. So, for example, things governing online format, things governing asynchronous, this is not just true in state policy, this is also true in federal policy, have to be carefully examined to understand, not just how do we meet current requirements, but what are sort of appropriate compliance mechanisms in order to evaluate us? And in some ways, you know, this is pioneering territory. We went through with our accreditor as well, right? We had to work with our accreditor to understand how standards not just apply to us in, but how do we get at the question of assessing for academic rigor and some of the things that are required through the objectives of the accreditation process? And I think this will be a similar exercise. You know, and I think what we've learned from talking with sister institutions who are really working hard to try and design and move in the direction of competency-based program, even if it's slightly differentiated, more of course-based structure than asynchronous structure, or some of those things that we're finding, that those hurdles, those hurdles are going to exist for, because they're inherent to the model. And so having somebody who has specialized in deep expertise in code, in in regulatory structure and all that stuff is an important part of really surfacing the precision of not just the barriers that exist, but to also help us think through what are solutions to offer to help folks move in this direction of being able to offer the flexibility of the model and some of the design features of the model that are, that are like what our learners need, right? So we built the thing our learners need, and we have to continue to evolve the policy and regulatory environment to make sure that that it can be accounted for there. And and that's a, again, that's a, that's a state effort, but that's really, you know, we have eyes towards the federal effort as well. And in that one, we're not alone. In that one, our understanding of what we do here in California also then translates to how we develop and then advocate for policies at the federal level to create those spaces there. And that's a lot of the work that we're doing in coordination with organizations like the Competency-Based Education Network.
Trustee Villa Vicencio.
Yeah, I think this question is also for President Menon, and you were touching a little bit of what I was going to ask. Are you contracting now for this position? But I was wondering, in the future, if you, were you thinking in terms of your strategic plan of maybe bringing in someone on your team who is an expert in this area, not just at the state level, perhaps on the federal level? Because I have a feeling, given the innovative work that Calbright is doing, this person would be, again, integral in this process, so.
Yeah, I think there are parts of the work that we'll do in California that we're doing, that we'll need to do in a way that pushes the conversation around the that we'll need to do in a way that pushes the conversation around the federal structures. And a lot of it has to do with like the time-based nature of the, the construct of those structures as well. So there are some folks on the SOVA team who have done more work in the federal space and there are also state expertise. So I will say that organization has both capabilities. And absolutely, I think it is a dual-track effort to understand the intersection between state policies and sort of federal requirements, especially as it relates to different programs and streams of funding that are used to support students in accessing the programs and the educational training opportunities that they need. So the short answer is yes to your question, some of that capability is here. And on a going forward basis, it's going to be an area where we're going to have to, to place more emphasis and to have more support, be that in-house or, which will continue to develop, but also sometimes some surgical external expertise as well.
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, team. Teri, I'd like to welcome public comment.
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. I'll take a motion.
Motion moved.
Second.
Love, we're going to have to get you faster in, in, in the pipeline. Trustee Villa Vicencio and trustee Chang, thank you very much. Teri, if you could please call the roll.
Love Adu.
Aye.
Hildegarde Agüinaldo.
Aye.
Adrian Brown.
Aye.
Casey Chang.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Ricardo de la Fuente.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Harry LeGrand.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Syrian Villa Vicencio.
Aye.
Bloss Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries President Agüinaldo.
Thank you very much, Teri. We're now in section five of our agenda for information and reports. I will take 5.1, which is an update on CalBright and the University of California Irvine Partnership. And for that, I will pass it to Marissa Bold, our VP of Sustainable Growth and District Development, who will welcome our other speakers.
Hello. Thank you, President Agüinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, and members of the board. I'm Marissa Bold, our VP of Sustainable Growth and District Development. We are excited to be here to share an update on how we're continuing to accelerate impact and innovation for working adult learners in our capacity as an R and D engine for the state, focusing today on two pilot initiatives. And as President Agüinaldo mentioned, we are thrilled to be joined by two partners, Tom Tash from Ideas42 and Kathy Senderling McDonald from Catbird Strategies, who we'll share a bit more about later in the presentation. But both have been incredible partners in the work and we are so appreciative that they're here today. Next slide, please. For a quick moment of context, some have seen this slide many times and for some it's new. We are sharing an update today on work that's really grounded in our multi-year board-approved partnership with the University of California Irvine, or UCI, as you'll hear us shorthand, and partners Ideas42. It's highly collaborative, really action-oriented work throughout the partnership and has become a model for how we do our work at CalBright. It focuses on applying data and behavioral science strategies to inform new and responsive approaches to support student outcomes, building on the incredible value and talent our students bring, as President Menon mentioned at the top of the meeting. And it focuses on driving transformation across the sector by prioritizing transferable, scalable initiatives and strategic diffusion, and exploring opportunities for continued innovation and growth as we've evolved the work over the course of our partnership together. Next slide, please. So as I was referring to just a second ago, before we dive into the pilot initiatives, I wanted to ground us in this visual. It's one we share each time because it represents a guiding arc to the work and because we're excited about both the specific impacts of the pilots as well as the process itself that allows that continued capacity building and impact over time. And in this evolution of the arc, we are focusing on R and D-focused pilots with an increased emphasis on transferable learnings and an eye towards scale. Strategic diffusion, little bit buzzwordy, but which includes broadening statewide impact and designing in collaboration with others to further enhance impact, capacity building, and scalability. Thought leadership, where CalBright has been regularly lifted up through conferences, earned media, and so much more, and really sought out for our experience at the leading edge of the learning curve. And identifying avenues for continued innovation and growth going forward. And a last note here, a thread that runs through all of our work and that you'll hear embedded in the pilots that we're talking about today are continuing to build that capacity internally, to listen deeply to student perspectives, to use data to inform solutions, and to address broader systemic challenges faced by adult learners at CalBright and across the state. Next slide, please. Now we'll dive into some specific examples of what this accelerated impact looks like. And I am pleased to welcome Tom Tash, Senior Director of Innovation at Ideas42, who many of us have gotten to know well, and to share encouraging results from our Learning Communities pilot, where we offered students the opportunity to connect with their peers in structured ways to help build momentum and increase assignment completion early on in their CalBright journey. We're especially excited to highlight some of the transferable lessons learned and how they're informing the next generations of our work on Student Journey 2.0. Next slide, please, and I will pass the baton to Tom.
Thank you so much for that introduction, Marissa. I'm very excited to be able to come back to the board and share this latest wave of pilot results. And as always, I want to just emphasize what a privilege it is to get to serve as a spokesperson for what Marissa rightly highlighted as such a highly collaborative, a highly cross-functional body of work. As just mentioned, that this first pilot that we really want to put under the spotlight today aimed to offer CalBright students opportunities for structured group learning. This was something that a literature and landscape review conducted by our partners at UC Irvine actually suggested would be a good fit for CalBright, something that the evidence said could boost engagement, along with many other student outcomes in online learning environments. And so we actually ran a formative pilot back in 2024, just to try to understand how students might respond to this kind of opportunity and what they actually hope to get out of it. And through that activity, we learned that a majority, a really large majority, in fact, of CalBright students were interested in group learning. But we also found that a fully synchronous format, no matter how flexibly we scheduled it, wouldn't work for all learners. We also learned that in addition to, you know, a chance to connect with their peers, many students came to that learning community space seeking help navigating their CalBright programs, as well as all the resources that were available to them as CalBright students. And based on the findings from that formative activity, we ultimately developed the model that you see up on the screen here, which we evaluated through a three-month pilot test that wrapped up in February of this year. Now, at a really high level, this is how it worked. Within CalBright's IT support and data analysis programs, we introduced learning communities to a randomly selected subset of students during their program onboarding. And then we then followed up with them with a pre-survey that asked them to select one of two different ways they could engage. So on the one hand, there was an asynchronous option, which gave them access to a Canvas workspace, resources, as well as some other opportunities for asynchronous peer engagement, or a synchronous option, which layered weekly workshops on top of those asynchronous elements to help try to sort of chunk the orientation to CalBright into bite-sized pieces. Next slide, please. Now, during the pilot, roughly twice as many students opted for that synchronous format compared to the asynchronous format, which reinforces the notion that even in a fully online, flexibly paced learning environment, many students are still going to find some value in some form of synchronous engagement. There were a total of four workshops as part of the pilot, and each centered on a theme like resource navigation, or online learning strategies, or goal setting and time management, all designed to try to lay a foundation for a really strong start at CalBright that we hope could give students lasting momentum during their first month, but importantly, beyond that as well. Now, in our pilot, these workshops were actually facilitated by a team of academic allies, we called them. They were former and current CalBright students who were recruited and trained by CalBright Student Engagement and Student Life Team. This really worked towards the pilot's goal of fostering peer connection, while also leveraging messengers that we thought would have really unique credibility when it came to helping support learners through the CalBright student journey, because they themselves had navigated it. While a subset of learners definitely got a lot of value out of this synchronous component, the synchronous engagement with the academic allies, attendance at these workshops was actually significantly lower than the total number of students who opted into that synchronous track. The average size of each learning community was around 13 students, but attendance at the workshops ranged from one to seven students. And so as the pilot progressed, we increasingly shifted the focus of the program towards, you know, enhancing some of the asynchronous elements that I mentioned just a moment ago. Things like that Canvas space and some of the other resources that were available to students, even if they weren't able to sign on to that one-hour workshop. This way, again, even if students weren't attending, they could still benefit in theory from the program. Next slide, please. And beyond just, you know, offering a space for students to access that structured group learning, a really important goal of this pilot was to understand the extent to which creating that kind of opportunity could actually drive faster progress and deeper engagement with the college. And what we found was very encouraging, what you see up on the screen here. So relative to a comparison group of students who were not offered a learning community during their program onboarding, students in our pilot group actually completed roughly 40% more assignments over their first three months at CalBright. And beyond just assignment completion and likely related to it, we also found that students in our pilot group were more engaged with different parts of the college. So for example, they were around 16% more likely to actually have gone in and set up and use their Slack account, and 18% more likely to have engaged with other synchronous supports like tutoring or counseling. Now, over time, what we've actually seen is that, you know, an initial lead that students in our pilot group establish early on appears to grow over time, ultimately up to the figures that you see here, reinforcing the notion that offering learners this kind of structured group learning experience at the beginning of the student journey can give them a strong start that can then carry them through their programs, you know, well beyond just the initial four weeks where those workshops I mentioned were really focused. This kind of builds their familiarity with the resources available to them at CalBright and establishes some durable habits around engaging with the college on a regular basis. Next slide, please. In addition to those quantitative results we just shared, we also collected some, what I think of as pretty powerful testimonials from students who were directly involved with learning communities. And I think these give us some insight into the value that this type of support can offer in more human terms. So as one student put it, everyone's really helpful and supportive. Sometimes I felt like I was just sending assignments into the void, but they gave me a good reminder that I'm not alone, giving me insights and relating to my struggles. Or in the words of another, being part of a learning community helped me grow both professionally and personally, boosting my confidence and improved my ability to work with others. And finally, without learning communities, navigating these resources can be overwhelming, particularly for those without prior tech experience. You know, beyond validating, you know, some of the underlying assumptions that went into the design of this pilot, I think feedback like this highlights the multifaceted value CalBright students found in this kind of structured group learning experience and underscores many of the things we want to try to carry forward into the scaling phase. Next slide, please. And that scaling phase is exactly what we're focusing on right now. We're taking all the learnings from the different stages of piloting we carried out and proactively applying them to the development of new concepts we can test in the future, as well as other initiatives that are being carried out related to Student Journey 2.0. So for example, we're in the planning phase of a new approach to student orientation that would directly leverage some of the learnings that came out of this pilot. Those are things like the importance of, you know, chunking orientation content into smaller, more spread out pieces that are easier for students to digest, or the power of leveraging near peers as guides and messengers to keep students engaged, or the need to tailor programs to student needs, learning styles, availability, preferences. And at the same time, this latest pilot has opened new questions we aim to shed light on with future pilots. For example, to what extent can we substitute synchronous activities with more flexible asynchronous alternatives that might, might work better for more students? Or how can we differentiate the kind of experience that we're offering students to better support learners with shared needs, such as non-native English speakers or student parents, both of whom are some of the groups to be most likely engaged with learning communities? And finally, you know, what are effective ways to promote self-directed group learning throughout the student journey without active facilitation by CalBright staff, faculty, or interns? But taking a step back, I think this pilot really demonstrates, more than any we've shared up to now, the power of the iterative and integrated approach to piloting we're taking, with learnings from each stage of our work informing, you know, not only future pilot opportunities, but also other initiatives going on all over the college. And with that, I'll hand it back over to you, Marissa.
Tom, thank you so much for that update. It is always so fun to dive into some of the examples of the work in practice, and we are just so appreciative of the opportunity to work together, to lift up powerful examples like this that help really illustrate how we're actively using data and behavioral science to inform solutions, are iterating and adapting to better meet the needs of our learners that's happening throughout the college, and capturing those transferable lessons learned to shape the future of our work and inform the field more broadly. Next slide, please. Now we're excited to transition to another example, and it's an early update. This is the earliest we've come to with one of these, so you're getting it right at the beginning and the earliest data that we're seeing. This initiative is focused on increasing student success and workforce outcomes through innovative approaches to basic need support. Core to this pilot is a focus on transferable approaches to increasing student access to public benefits with an eye toward strategic diffusion and scale through collaborations with subject matter experts, sister colleges, counties, and more. And we're doing this work in collaboration with Catbird Strategies, and I want to welcome Kathy Senderling McDonald. Kathy brings 26 years of experience in California legislative and government affairs, as well as two decades of national-level engagement and leadership in this work. In particular, she worked at the County Welfare Directors Association in California for 23 years in a number of capacities, most recently as Executive Director. She's an expert on health and human services policy, practice, and budgeting, and we're so appreciative of partnering with Kathy and engaging her expertise in this project. Next slide, please, and I'll turn it over initially for our intro to Kathy.
Great, thanks, Marissa. I appreciate that kind introduction and hi, everybody. I'm grateful to talk about this topic with all of you today. As Marissa mentioned, I come at the issue of student access to basic need supports from an angle grounded in a deep understanding of public benefits programs, especially what I like to call the big three, CalFresh, CalWorks, and Medi-Cal. I think most people have heard a lot about how CalFresh take-up rates are much lower for college students than we would hope or expect, given the levels of need and likely eligibility. And that remains the case, though we know a lot of colleges and counties are doing work in partnership to try to change that. CalBright College offers a unique way to think about connecting more students with all of these benefits due to the fact that it has students in 57 of 58 counties now. And CalBright students are very representative of older students, students who have families, and students who are also caregivers. There's a long history of supporting public benefits access for students in the community college system, as you, as you know, I'm sure. But we know that students frequently under-report their basic needs and security, which limits institutions' ability to connect them with those critical supports. We also know that students eligible for public benefits often face barriers during the application process and the eligibility process, resulting in incomplete applications, not getting through the process, or just ultimately not receiving those available supports. CalBright's role as an R and D engine and your experience with rapid prototyping and student-centered design lets us think differently, though, here about solutions and test some new ways to increase benefits access that are going to be really instructive and also transferable to other campuses. With this work, we're hoping to support students to express their needs, connect with resources, and access benefits online. The planned approach integrates with BenefitsCal, the online application and eligibility system that all 58 county human services agencies now use. BenefitsCal enables staff at community colleges to help students with their applications and even support them through the rest of the eligibility and enrollment process, which we hope to tap into. We think overall this approach complements the support students may already receive from counselors, staff, the basic needs office, by providing tools that address student needs without increasing the workload on institutional teams or requiring extensive trainings or outright expertise in public benefits programs. We're really trying to think about scalability and engagement with colleges, our sister colleges, as well as with counties and community partners in this work. We'll continue to collaborate and engage with the CalBright Success Team, along with other colleges and other organizations, to identify how best to embed this support into broader student success strategies and evaluate impact across student populations. Marissa, I'll turn it back over to you, and of course, I'm available to answer questions and participate in any discussion after the presentation wraps up.
Kathy, thank you so much. We are so appreciative of your expertise of all that you do and the opportunity to work together, to think differently, and to move the needle on benefits uptake to support student outcomes at CalBright. to support student outcomes at CalBright and beyond. I'll hand it over now back to Tom to share how we're collaborating and utilizing the data and behavioral science strategies and frameworks in this work as well. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Marissa. Now, I'm not allowed to have favorites when it comes to the many pilots that we've worked on together with CalBright over the years, but I will say, I think this initiative in particular is one of the most interesting, most exciting that we've kicked off since we first began this work. Not only because we're addressing, I think, barriers outside the traditional focus of a lot of student success work, but also because it gives us the opportunity to collaborate with new partners like Kathy and more. What we're doing related to basic needs, I think, is also bigger than our past pilots. And the results we're sharing today, as Marissa mentioned up at the top, are just the first of many experiments that we're preparing to run over the months ahead as this cross-functional and highly student-centered work builds momentum. Now, as Marissa mentioned, we want to spotlight some early results and learnings from that work today. But before we get there, I want to shine a light just on some of the different kinds of activities that got us where we are today. So at the beginning, drawing on past research, as well as pretty deep expertise and experience working on benefits access that partners across the partnership bring, as well as existing data and conversations with CalBright staff and students themselves, we began by hypothesizing a range of potential barriers that we thought could be getting in the way of students applying for benefits they might be eligible for. Then, building on that foundational research, we worked cross-functionally to brainstorm a range of potential solutions that we could implement and test at CalBright with an eye critically toward transferability and scalability. And that's where we are today, having just refined our initial designs and begun fielding our first tests just last month. Next slide, please. Well, this pilot definitely represents an exciting evolution in our approach. Everything we're testing still flows from the same behavioral science framework that we've leveraged across all our work. And at a really high level, that approach defines three basic priorities. First, helping focus student attention on basic needs and available supports. Second, building student intention to seek help and access resources. And third, supporting students in following through on the actions required to actually apply for and receive benefits. Now, behavioral science points to a range of potential ways to help drive impact on each of these three dimensions. For example, we know one reason students don't use benefits can be perceived stigma around doing so, or a perception that programs like CalFresh aren't intended for them. So we're thinking about ways to help students understand that these programs are a normal part of a student's journey, something many students actually use. Still, you know, other students might hesitate to seek information or apply because of the perceived complexity of the eligibility criteria or the application process itself. So we're thinking of ways to simplify things for them and provide proactive targeted supports. Our first wave of piloting is starting small, examining more incremental changes we can make to existing touchpoints. But we'll be using the evidence we generate at every stage to ultimately build toward more comprehensive solutions that we think can shift the needle on both benefits uptake as well as persistence, completion, and workforce outcomes, both at CalBright and beyond. Next slide, please. And that initial wave of piloting is already generating actionable insights. To give you one concrete example, an early focus of ours is increasing the share of students who disclose potential needs they're facing to CalBright. The theory being, you know, it's difficult to address basic needs if we can't first identify the students who have them. And by incorporating seemingly small changes to some of the questions, including included, excuse me, in a survey during program onboarding, we've actually seen some pretty sizable increases in the rates of students who do indicate a need. Using a set of behavioral science tactics like presumptive framing or concretization, asking students to pick which resources might be helpful to them rather than asking if they might find these resources helpful, or giving students concrete examples and timeframes instead of asking more vague questions about abstract concepts like housing insecurity, we've already more than doubled the share of students who've responded to these questions during onboarding, with an even larger relative increase in the overall share of students disclosing a specific need related to housing or food. Now, this is by no means a mission accomplished. It's still early days for our work on basic needs. But these initial tests reframing how basic needs are introduced to students have given us momentum that we're riding into deeper stages of our benefits access work, a work that we ultimately hope can surface transferable learnings as well as practices for the broader system and the broader sector. And with that, I'll hand it back over to Marissa and look forward to engaging more in the Q and A section.
Thank you, Tom, and we can switch to the next slide, please. I just want to thank you, Tom and Kathy both. We are just so appreciative of all that you do and for being here with us today. Just, we ended on this arc because we are always thinking about the specific pilots, the specific examples, the specific results, what we can learn, and also just how it is accelerating our ability to innovate, to iterate, to expand pathways for CalBright students and for the millions of working adult learners across California and beyond. So it is always the anchor of how we think about this. But I especially want to thank the board for your continued support and leadership in this work. It has just been so powerful, and we are so appreciative. And we promise to return with updates on the basic needs work as it evolves, on future pilots, and we welcome any and all questions on any of the topics from today or beyond.
Thank you very much. I'll take trustee Ching and then trustee Villa Vicencio next.
Thank you for the presentation. I think it's very informative. This being my last meeting, I won't get to see the follow-up, but I love to see the work that CalBright is doing for its students, knowing that it's, the students are across the state of California, which is very different than any other district. One question that kind of popped into my mind when you were mentioning workshops, specifically synchronous, because being a student, I've always enjoyed, especially when we were on Zoom, synchronous workshops and being able to build community and learning that way. Did you find certain workshops were more popular? And if so, was that based on content, the time they were available, or like another factor that might be impacting students?
Awesome. Tom, do you want to take that?
Yes, it's a great question, and I'll throw a few different answers out there. And I'll use this also as a chance to illustrate something that we really wanted to get through, which was the value of actually multiple pilots that build on each other. Because when we actually ran that formative pilot I mentioned, the non-evaluative one last year, our thought was, we're going to make this purely social. We want to do a kind of experiment of, let's set aside, we know there's supports and introductions to resources elsewhere. Let's make it all about community building. And while, you know, that resonated for students, the feedback we actually got at the end was, I liked this. I enjoyed getting to meet and connect with other CalBright students. But what I'd really like is a chance to do that while, you know, working on something directly related to my program. And so what we did in the pilot, the results that we shared here, was actually take feedback from students on what they'd find most helpful and actually build that into the learning communities program. So while there were still those social elements, we were able to bring things in, like an introduction to counseling and career services, things like an introduction to Slack or setting up different accounts, different pieces of kind of the digital student experience. And those, again, that mixture of both kind of content that was responsive to the social needs and the social goals of the program, but also the goals that we know exist for students who are very much focused on working through a program, earning that certificate, getting the job, I think sort of struck the sweet spot for us. And then in terms of timing, yeah, that is, I won't say we have that one figured out. It is, as you can imagine, it is challenging. CalBright students are extremely busy. They are juggling jobs, family responsibilities, so much more. And so finding a time when core groups of students can actually reliably meet is a challenge. That is one advantage of scale, though, is that over a larger number of students, you know, there are, there's a greater reliability of kind of finding a common point that students are able to connect. But the final thing I'll say is that there is a disconnect that we are actually digging into in terms of, you know, when students might raise their hand and say, I want the synchronous engagement, but then when we actually observe how they're plugging in, they have a sort of revealed preference maybe for that more asynchronous engagement. And so for us, that means we need to do a better job of creating more supportive choice architecture for the students up at the front so that they can get matched to the format that's actually going to work best for them. But definitely, there's going to be, I think, a role for some form of that kind of synchronous experience.
I'll just add one thing, which is like, the reason that we do this work in this way is because it's not just a singular intervention pilot here or there, but it's a systemized way for us to constantly building nuanced understanding of learner needs. And what we learned is there is not a one-size-fits-all model. And so the best part of the setup this way and how each of the pilots and activities reinforce each other is because we learn some of the dimensions of that to create greater efficacy in the types of services offered, and then to recognize that we have to vary it across different learner types and learner experiences and realities. So all of this gets us better at learning our learner, and it also gets us better at being able to customize more in a way that can still scale. And I think that's, so I like to think about it not just as the tasks we've developed in each pilot that we share, but it's actually the capability we have as an organization across the student success team, across the learning and instruction team, and across the product and technology team to actually then make that actionable in real ways. And so I think it's very different than how you typically hear researchers or institutions talk about pilot work. And it's also gives us a more nuanced set of learnings that are translatable beyond CalBright as well, because it's not you have to do A to B, the entire CalBright thing, but you can see marginal improvements by varying the methods that you take to take that action and by measuring the results. And I think that's, that's just a powerful capability that we stand on, that we think is what we were supposed to do as the sort of R&amp;D engine for the system, but also, you know, different than we might think of like an academic R&amp;D center in a research university. Not that there's any shame or shade on that, but this particular tactical approach is, we think, beneficial for the learners that we represent here, but also up and down the state in terms of how it benefits folks throughout the system.
All right, we have trustee Villa Vicencio, trustee Epstein, and trustee Haynes. Shocker.
I share the enthusiasm with this amazing work. As you were giving it, as you were presenting, you know, what I think CalBright is doing is sort of creating a sense of belonging, which is very important for all of our students, really, not just CalBright, but across the system. And I'm glad that CalBright is really exploring this model, these models, because what I think you're really doing is actually equity work, which is actually not part of your presentation, but I think it encompasses that. As a faculty member who's actually created a learning community at my college that is now in its tenth cohort, I will tell you, and I believe the data and the research shows that when you bring, when you put students together, they work together, they form that sense of belonging, and you see it in terms of their outcomes, in terms of their academic outcomes. And so really, really appreciative that you're now exploring other areas, expanding and scaling up these learning communities. I heard you mention non-English learners, student parents. Wonderful. May I suggest maybe looking at, if you have an already first-generation student, and looking at learning communities through, I think you were already mentioning this through programs. And so I'm wondering if you already have plans for cohort-based models already in place, too. I think that would be amazing. And I'd love to see here, collecting data on disaggregated data on the students that you are piloting and you're enrolling in these, these learning communities as well. I'm wondering, too, if there is an avenue for identity and community-based programs. And I'm talking about, obviously, I'm speaking from my experience working at my college here with Puente and Yumouja and the Anapi Student Achievement Program, and bringing those students to also together, because if that's the case, there may be avenues and pathways to tap into those programs here within CalBright if you're not already doing that. But I am totally excited to see that this is happening because you're now bringing things from the in-person space to the digital virtual space, and I think that is equity. Our digital students need to have that equitable learning experience that our in-person students also have. So I'm really looking forward to this, and I'd love to get your thoughts on some of the ideas that I threw out. So thank you for the wonderful work that you're doing.
Great. I will let Tom speak if there are any specifics, but I will say more broadly, too, just A, incredible appreciation for that. B, we definitely are taking notes behind the scenes, too, because there's a lot of amazing things in what you said. And C, that we, one of the things that I think will be so powerful in building on a lot of the different, really meeting students where they are that you were talking about, and helping ensure that we are meeting the diverse needs of all of our students, that we are accelerating all of our students through connection, community, and belonging, building on the skills and talents that they're starting with and helping support them in what is going to accelerate their journey through to completion and workforce outcomes. And we are embedding that in everything that we're doing, and similar to the experience you had with Mariah and Student Journey 2.0 and all of that. So I think you'll see embedded in everything you hear from our incredible, you know, from Dawn, from Shannon, from Vivek, our incredible VPs in student success, learning and instruction, workforce, and more, that you'll continue to see that embedded and continue to see how we can adapt to meet the needs of our students and how we are instrumenting the college and building the culture and talent to measure, to try that, to measure that, to listen, to adapt, to learn. So I think there, we have so many examples of what you said and how we are thinking about the differentiation. And possibly one of the most important things is that we're not limiting it to silos, that we're continually asking that question. We're continually adapting, and we're continually looking at new ways to, community and belonging was a core component of the Tools Competition, too, that we talked about a few board meetings ago as well, and looking at the tools in the system that we can use to continually adapt to meet students and to differentiate what we're offering. So there's a lot in what you said where we have specific offerings, and then there's others where we are going to continue to be able to differentiate, to meet the students. And so, Tom, if there's anything in particular that you want to touch on as an example, but I just think you'll continue to see that, because that's how we're trying to design it.
I'll just, I think that's all really important. And I think the most important is in this act of creating the spaces for student connection and belonging, not just the interventions themselves. I think we don't make assumptions of it because what our work to date has taught us is that learners have become very dimensional, and the opportunities to create space and connection need to be driven by the dimensions they see themselves in and in a way that has, as you learn from the way that Tom highlighted, what our learners represented to us, purposeful towards their goal. And so I will say, there's a, I think, more of those spaces in the work that a lot of our front lines on the student support and leadership team do to support our Student Body Association and other folks who are also built, part of building what that sense of community, connection, and participation looks like at CalBright. We'll start to see this dimension to be much more about personalized ways that folks kind of connect to one another in the institution. So it's almost like, you know, even when we say like, will you do more synchronous and cohort-based things? When we think about it, it's how do we create respect sort of the time and the bounds that our students present to us and find creativity in generating the effects that we know are associated with those types of structures and models? And so when we think about even cohort, we think about it, how do we simulate cohorts' effects, right? And part of that is some synchronous connection and opportunities, but not mandating that as a structural part of the program design experience. Like, you know, that's kind of been the space that will continue to evolve, and it will be, again, like largely driven by what we learn with our learners as we go through it, which I will just say has been rewarding from my perspective, largely because part of how most of us see our purpose in this work is to create space and agency for learners going through this, not just this process, but in seeking out these opportunities. And so that feels like the responsible way to do it and the non-paternalistic way to do it as well.
Thank you. We have Epstein, Haynes, Legrand, and Brown. And then Delafonte.
So I have a question about the basic needs part. I know that there have been a bunch of efforts to create a dashboard of, you know, of state services for low-income people that includes things like CalFresh, Mediacal, CalWorks. And there was some guy from McKinsey who came to us like nine years ago and wanted us to participate in that. And I was just wondering, I mean, do, and I know the state has pursued this sort of thing. What's the status of that? And how is CalBright, I mean, whatever CalBright is doing plugged into that? Or is it, does it not exist, and we're kind of inventing it on our own? Or where do we fit in?
I'll let Kathy speak to some of the greater detail around what exists today in terms of coordination and documentation and integration of different types of benefit approaches. We chose very surgically to focus on the efforts associated with, with like the participant behavior, with the students directly needing to access these things. And we confront a lot of the barriers on the lack of coordination side. We all do, and all of those things. So I think building knowledge and understanding and awareness of where the lever points might be to ease participation in things like application, and also to, to leverage the coordination efforts, I think is where we would see our role as an institution, but really focusing our, part of our contribution to the effort to be around how we support participants in that process in service of the pursuit of the educational opportunity. So I will say like, we are aware, we understand where that's happening in sync with those efforts, but don't take responsibility for doing that work, because that's work kind of outside of our control and ability to do. But, but this work, I think, is intimately connected to seeing ultimately on the outcome side of the equation, making sure folks in, in both, you know, in a bidirectional way, have access to the things that they need while they're in school, but also, you know, in, in the future. And as we, as we look at other places that we can support efforts of many of those types of programs to enhance educational opportunity, not just for the students like within the boundaries of the institution, but also who are participants in those programs, becomes an important thing that's additive when you learn how to make those programs work better for those people. So I do think, I think we've, we've chosen something very specific and most connected to what our learners need. And I think it'll have a strong contribution to the efforts that other folks who are in the social services field and in those programs are trying to work through on, on their side of the equation.
I will definitely turn it to Kathy, who can speak to BenefitsCal and some of the other ways that, like new systems and ways things have come across. And also, Tom, one thing I will say too, that builds on what Ajita was saying, is really leveraging the behavioral science frameworks here too, in that once that information is available, how are we getting, how are students aware of that? How are we supporting them through nudges and other steps where they have tended to fall off in the process, or where they might hit a roadblock and a barrier? And so how are we thinking differently about that framework that Tom was talking about, attention, intention, and then action? And we're really excited about some of those small tweaks that can support and scaffold students through that process as well. But I'll turn it to Kathy for the specifics on the detailed question too.
Sure. It's a great question, trustee. I would say that there have been efforts, and they continue to try to build out that kind of a, if not a dashboard, maybe a finder or a way that you can have at least a compendium. There are some private, you know, services through the internet now that offer that. California Competes, which you have probably heard of or have worked with, I think, at CalBright, they do have a public benefits finder that they have online, and that's one of the ones that nonprofits have. There's, there's a few there. You know, it's hard to keep those up to date, and you're still kind of pointing people towards things that are maybe less coordinated or targeted as far as some additional support, should they need that. And I think that's why, like Ajita and Marissa are saying, we're really focusing on BenefitsCal. The reason why that makes a lot of sense is because, of course, county human services agencies do the eligibility for the big three programs that we're talking about, CalFresh, CalWorks, and Medi-Cal. And those three programs are all embedded within the BenefitsCal public-facing portal for people to be able to apply for one, two, or all three of those programs at the same time. All 58 county human services agencies now use this one system as well. The backend system on BenefitsCal, which is called CalSAWS, since October 2023, all 58 counties have been on that system. And you, Mayor, might not know, that was actually momentous. I'd been working, as, as you know, for over two decades in the field, and we started with four, and then we moved to three systems and hopped over to a little bit, but ultimately got to that one system just with, less than two years ago. And so now being able to have, especially for, in this case, CalBright, the online 57 county presence with students now, being able to help a student who lives in any one of those counties to apply for, and then run some resistance if needed with that county eligibility system. What the BenefitsCal counselors have been able to do, and they'll be getting, you know, some training on this and, and becoming facile with it, is there's a CBO facing portal. So what you might go, you know, you're at home in your bathroom and you want to apply for CalFresh, you're going to do that, and you're going to see a public-facing portal. The counselors are going to sign in and be able to see a bit more of a robust portal, where if someone is applying, using their assistance, they can track, have they turned in documents? Are things missing? If they're doing CalFresh or CalWorks, they would need an interview. They'll even see if they've done the interview. And so they can then, like Marissa's saying, and we're going to be kind of building through some of this along with Ideas 42, how do we remind them that they need to do something, that they have something they need to turn in? And so these are some really exciting opportunities that that one system for all of the counties and that CBO role kind of come into play, and enable us to think about how to target the assistance to those that seem to need it, while making sure to get the access to those who can, could do it on their own, are just not sure where to even start. And so we know there's going to be people who, who need those different levels of assistance. And so we're thinking through in these next iterations of this pilot. And, and I'll shut up in a sec and let, and see if you have more questions. But, I mean, I will just say, just the, the idea of having iterations of a pilot is so fantastic, because that is not something that we typically would see on the social services side. You know, like Ajita was saying, research can take a lot of time. And on the social services ends of things, is small tweaks. You don't just get to tweak and test. Those things take a lot of time. And so to start receiving information about messaging and, and which messages are looking better than other messages, and then being able to switch that up a little and see if we do better by making a small change, that, that rapid prototyping, R and D kind of lab that, that CalBright offers and that we're doing here is, is pretty exciting and not something that I've been able to experience in the, the basic needs space in the past. So just wanted to kind of share that too, from, from my perspective on it.
Just one quick thing. Do we know what other community colleges are doing? I assume that, you know, some of them must be doing this kind of work, right? And are we, are we sharing with them? They sharing with us? I mean, how, how's that going?
Yeah. So, you know, I think we're very, I will say, I think maybe we all miss Rebecca O'Shaughnessy in the chancellor's office, who was coordinating and leading a lot of that activity, who, who I know now is at College Futures Foundation. So I think, fortunately, we have, I think, a few access points of like, really learning about other places in local contexts where this is happening really well, or it's happening in particular really well with like a benefit program integrated in. So I think there's like, there are a number of bright spots, because every college leader that I talk to up and down the system cares about this set of issues and will scrap and solve for it in any way possible in their local context. And so I think absolutely, I think there's a lot of knowledge out there that we have understanding of and access to. It also, like, that awareness helps us understand, like, what is the piece that we focus on, right? And so that's part of the, the reason why I think we, it informed how to focus in the area that we think could have the greatest contribution to a lot of those efforts that are ongoing, are additive in nature, and aren't really displacing any of the, the current work that's going on. But the reality is also, Tom, that like, there's not statewide or systemized ways of addressing this set of challenges. And so we're, because we're uniquely positioned as a statewide institutions, we can test in that way, in a way that can benefit the aggregate of learners across the system that would be benefiting by sort of ease or greater understanding or research that we might develop about how to ensure folks can access and continue to benefit from the programs that they're available for them and they're eligible for.
Great. Haynes, Brown, Delafonte, Costa.
So I don't want to take thunder away from Amy, because I know that at one point that she worked for Alameda County at a very high position and knows a lot about this. What I would say is that I'm just so pleased, because what CalBright is trying to do is 57 counties, which are still an amalgamation, and with the exception of LA County, which is huge behemoth, that no matter what happens, they're always trying to, they're running after the ball. And this, what I heard this morning really speaks to providing the impetus for the 7,400 students in this, in our system, to be able to help advocate for themselves, but giving them the tools and then keeping up with all of the changes that are happening. Because this, what CalBright is doing is a statewide effort relative, relative to that. But that wasn't really, I just want to say, I want to commend CalBright for staying on top of this. And I really, I'm, I'm, I'm in awe relative to this, because it is such a key component for the success of our, our student base. But the question I really kind of started wanting to ask is, we're at 7,400, which helps us even ask more questions relative to how our students are navigating. And, and I have been waiting for the Irvine presentation. So I was very excited to see this on there, because when, when we first started the pilot, the, the work was just exciting to me, to really work on this supportive piece and what that looks like for our students. I guess the question I want to ask, I, I recognize that, that we're going to have to continue to do this at different levels. So we're at 7,400. The question is, let's say when we get to 30,000, okay, I'm optimistic. Okay. When we get to 30,000, does that, does that demographic change any? Will it matter if we move from rather 50% of our students being female? Will we, will we move if it's 60% or 65% to begin to ask different questions or have to re kind of resurface the questions that we need to ask? Is this an ongoing iteration in perpetuity, depending on the size, depending on the demographics in different counties?
I am thinking about how best to answer this question, but I will say, when we used to think about conventional programmatic design in the public sector, we said, we had a finite amount of information. We would say people lived here, that this is the, this is the boxes that they checked on the census form. And on the basis of that, we made some assumptions about what they needed. And, and then we created programs, and we created them largely in 1965.
But now we're asking our students.
Now, what we are, we have built ourselves to do is to evolve with the understanding of more nuanced needs that exist in our communities, not just categorical needs. And I, I think that's critically important in the shift in the way that we do the work and how we also think about what we're positioned to do as an organization that goes next. Because the reality is that demographic shifts are inevitable. They will become more volatile and dynamic, as we are experiencing now. And we cannot take those same conventional approaches to program design, and I don't mean academic programs, I literally mean, determine how we allocate public resources to support our communities without taking a different lens and set of methodological approaches to that toolbox. And so I, that's why I think I almost have a, the answer is yes, by design, quite intentionally, and anticipation of the shifts and the disruptions going to continue, going to accelerate. That is the future of what we need to be prepared for in the public sector, not just within our educational institutions, but throughout our public resourcing. And that is an extraordinarily hard thing to do, because we rarely create space and we rarely provide the leadership cover that is needed to do that work, to do that hard work in communities against what exists today. And I don't think it's unfair that the pushback happens either, because I think that, that the historical record has shown us that when we surface things that we're still working on, or trying to evolve, or questions remain unanswered, the instinct often by policymakers, legislators, or political opponents is to try to just shut it down. And this is, this is sort of going to be really be a disservice to us going forward. And then, and again, I'm not, I'm speaking not just on my perspective as leading this higher ed institution. It is just in recognition of how intersectional all this, all these things have come, but how we have not evolved ourselves to meet that community need in that way.
Thank you.
But I will say the communities are forcing that, right? And in a, in a way that's also essential.
You mentioned the word intersectional. I think that's a great transition to our trust, Steve Brown, who often makes that a focus in hers. So absolutely no pressure, but intersectional.
Anticipating when people are, are going to click the mic, now anticipating comments. You are brilliant, Hildy. So yes, I wanted to surface that this is guided pathways. I'm actually looking at the guided pathways playbook, and I see that some of the colleges have set up, and they're being used as, as examples, and they've set up physical spaces where some of the things that you just described are happening. And what was just mentioned about how can CalBright help all of the rest of the colleges? We don't match our services to our online learners across the state. No, I don't think any college has the full array of services being provided to online learners that are being provided to in-person learners. So I think that's actually that niche area where CalBright is really shining and can really help. Because what it says here is connecting students to their program of study and the greater campus community. Colleges doing this well are transitioning from a one-time orientation approach to personalized, ongoing approach to connect students to their program of study and greater campus community. Everyone on the campus has an important role to play in this work. But not just on the campus, right? Everyone also has, you know, we, we are responsible for the online learners as well. And some of our students are only online. So it's, there's, this is an equity issue. And of course, no one else has such a focus as CalBright does on this. So this is really fascinating, exciting. I'm liking to see, I'm seeing the wonderful outcomes, and I want to see these kind of outcomes across the state. So we really need your partnership when it comes to, I know Chancellor Christian is really going to be working on pushing more professional development. So I really want to see, when I see documents like this, I want to see CalBright in there every time too, right? Because it's, this innovation is absolutely needed, and we don't have the resources and time to explore it to the depth that you have. So thank you so much for this, and I look forward to seeing that.
Delafonte Don Costa.
Wonderful. I'd love to see that pilot about the peer-to-peer learning. I think people come for the content, they stay for the connection. And that peer-to-peer learning, I had a professor at HBS that talked about the three buckets of learning. One is the lectures and the readings. Two, the second bucket is the peer-to-peer learning, and the third is the self-reflection. And when you create that peer-to-peer environment, you build lifelong friendships. If you, you know, even though you're online, you can still develop relationships, and eventually those online relationships become offline. And when you finally meet, you feel like you already know each other. So I think, very promising, very exciting to see more of that and see how we can scale and, and make a greater impact. But it's exciting what we're doing here, and very excited to see the pilot and look forward to learning more.
Thank you, trustee Costa.
I love, love, love this. First of all, I'm so happy that Kathy is helping with this work, because she really understands this. And, you know, to Pam's point, I have just a very surface level. And I think, you know, part of what's happening here, and we talked a lot about complexity, this is really complex, because these are all federal programs, and our ability to kind of impact that complexity is kind of limited. And honestly, it was a real head scratcher for me. So I think this is such an innovative approach to help people navigate that complexity, because we can't really change the complexity. And candidly, based on what DC is saying, it might get even more complex. And so I also love the timing of this, because as they start talking about redeterminations and all of that kind of stuff, we actually have this wonderful tool to help our students. And I do think there's probably some shareable stuff here for other community colleges. So anyway, just kudos. I love it. I think this is just such great work.
What a great note to end our board comments on. I welcome at this time any public comments, Terry.
There was no public comment.
Great. Thank you very much.
I know I pulled my name off the list, but if I could just make one statement?
Go for it.
This is a personal point of pride. As a, as a former- This is a personal point of pride as a, as a former, as a, as a UCI alum. Zot, zot, I am so happy to see my alma mater involved in this process. Thank you very much.
I would say we have a, we have a wonderful partner in Dean Contreras at UC Irvine. And so we're, we're grateful for their, their work in opening up that team to us. That's an incredible school of education and it's, it's, it's on the, on the rise. So I will, I will also plug UCI. I think they're, they've been incredible partners to work with, but also so appreciative of the leadership of the dean over there.
I think the question is, what campus hasn't Harry been at? Now that we know he has a connection to UCI.
I have a lot of VPs in this CSU system nervous that like, don't even look at my campus.
Our next speakers, Shannon McCarty, Vice President of Learning and Instruction, and Michael Younger, VP of Workforce Strategy and Innovation, have incredible shoes to fill following that, that presentation. But they, they will be talking about work-based learning at Calbright. So please give it your best shot, you two.
Challenge accepted. All right. President Aguanato, Vice President Wallings. Not that we're competitive at all. No competition here. We're excited to present to you the next phase of work-based learning at Calbright. And I am Shannon McCarty, Vice President of Learning and Instruction. And I am joined by my colleague.
Michael Younger, Vice President of Workforce Strategy and Innovation.
Right. So next slide, please. I'm going to give you just a little bit of an overview of how we'll spend our time with you. We're going to give you, talk a little bit about what, what work-based learning is at Calbright, what we are learning from students, and then give an update on our experiential learning and leadership, or EXL program. Michael's going to give an update on the CWA project. And then we have some friends joining us today. So we have partners from Ripen who will highlight both the company at Ripen and then the work that we're doing on Career Bridge. And then kind of our work forward and our partnership with Tech SF. So very excited to have those individuals join us as well. All right, next slide. So as we always do, we want to try and start with the student perspective. And so when we really wanted to dive into experiential learning and work-based learning at Calbright, we wanted to ask students what they, what they needed and wanted. So next slide, please. We did form a working group and it was a cross-functional group, part of learning instruction, student success. We had workforce strategy as well as our economic development individuals join us. And we went through a human-centered design process. So we reached out to students and we really asked them through focus groups as well as surveys, what they would like to see for work-based learning, what does it mean to them? What are the opportunities? And just ensuring that we were meeting their evolving needs. So what we learned was kind of some fun stuff. So next slide, Terry. The opportunities that they were looking for were extremely diverse. They weren't just looking for your traditional apprenticeship or internship. They had some creative ideas to bring to the table as well. So ideas from either simulated learning to volunteering, to even maker spaces, and even some labs that perhaps could be located up and down the state that they could join and participate in. The support that they wanted was connection from their community. They wanted to make sure that they had individuals there to support them, to help train them and to onboard them. And that can come from their peers, it could come from mentors, faculty mentors, counselors, and just any other kind of resources that would help make sure that they were workforce-ready. And the working conditions, as you can imagine, they wanted to make sure that they had competitive wages, that it was very flexible in their ability to participate in these opportunities, that they would receive resource and guidance along the way as well. So we really take all of that. And as we think about how do we engage in work-based learning? How do we expand it? How do we bring it in and implement it within Calbright? These are always at the back of our minds. So next slide. So the goals that we've really clearly established in any of the individual kind of programs that we have been implementing is ensuring that they were creating hands-on learning. So making sure that it's authentic and real and reinforces what they learned in their programs. We want to create learning experiences that are developing not only technical but durable skills. So making sure that we heard from students about what durable skills they really want to foster and continue to evolve. Professional experiences where there's actually a project that is deliverable so they can add it to their portfolio as they're going out and, and applying for jobs. And then increasing their marketability as well as making sure that there are some opportunities for experiential learning that might lead to full-time jobs for these students. So next slide. So some of the, the feedback that we did receive from the survey is they wanted to be able to take their conceptual knowledge, kind of the concepts and theories, but to actually apply them to these work-based learning opportunities. They were really focused in on critical thinking. So making sure that they were problem-solving and thinking about what new ideas that they had learned. And then digital fluency, as you can imagine, was high on their list. So making sure that they were able to be digitally ready for any of these job opportunities. And then really obviously applying their technical skills that they learned during their program. So those are kind of the key findings that we had found. And I'm going to transition now to our experiential learning and leadership program that we offer at Calbright and just give you some highlights. This program has been around for a little over two and a half years and we roll these out every six months. And we have individuals that participate across Calbright. We have peer tutors. We also have student support interns. You heard some of the interns were a part of the learning communities. They were called the student allies. And then we are actually rolling these out across different departments as well. So from institutional research to learning and instruction to even our tech department, we have students participating as interns in project management, as doing some data analysis for us, and then even providing tech support. So really excited about all the different opportunities that we have expanded across Calbright. Next slide. And since its inception, we have had 433 students apply. We've had five cohorts about two and a half years, 117 total internships, and 80 of those are unique students. And then 49 total jobs have been posted over those two and a half years. And really they focus on the technical aspects, the things that students learn through the program, as well as communication and leadership, providing them professional development, and then even some of the durable skills, as I mentioned previously. And what students are saying, and I won't read all of those quotes to you, but one of the ones that I really wanted to highlight was the first one. "And participating in the EXL program was instrumental in preparing me for my current leadership role at Epic Sciences. The experiences, skills I gained were vital for this position." So really trying to create as many real-world opportunities for students so they can take those skills, apply for jobs, and then get those jobs. And I'm going to transition over to getting an update from Michael related to the CWA project.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. McCarty. I wanted to kind of center us with a stat. According to an analysis by the Jobs, Jobs for the Future, 164 million people in the US adult workforce. Out of the 164 million, 130 face systemic barriers to advancement, including people without a four-year degree, people of color, women of all backgrounds, and people with criminal records. Just about 38 million work in what we consider quality jobs, meaning roles that not only provide a decent wage and basic benefits, but also offer stability, flexibility, autonomy, and equitable opportunities for economic advancement. You'll recall, this board in July 2024 approved the California Workforce Accelerator Pilot Program. An unprecedented, next slide, unprecedented partnership, public-private partnership between Calbright, Nexus Edge, and the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. Next slide. Within this partnership, Calbright provides online learning and career training programs, thought leadership. Nexus Edge provides both co-creation of curriculum and then also the Nexus Edge platform via Canvas. GoBiz, the state of California, offers this partnership the opportunity to source employer partners and expand employment opportunities for our students and the broader system. HubSpot, a $40 billion CRM entity, is involved in this experience to provide work-based learning opportunities to our students. The pilot in itself reflects Calbright's commitment to co-designing innovative employer validated and education to employment solutions that expand economic opportunity for working learners across California and truly leverages strategic partnership to bring real-time paid, skills-based working experience directly to learners, starting with the AI marketing micro internship that I'll share more about today. Additionally, from the conversation before as well, this pilot demonstrates our commitment to offering our insights and opportunities to not just Calbright students, but to the broader California community college system. A moment of personal reflection as well as Calbright really went about this in a cross-collaborative way. These initiatives are not possible without strong and developing internal cross-collaboration within Calbright, contributions from learning and instruction, student services success, workforce, research and development, marketing and communications, as well as our product teams. It was so instrumental to bringing this forward. Next slide. The pilot officially launched March 2025 and was designed with a learner at the center, offering structured, high-impact and employer-connected experiences that prepare students for the future work, future of work in real time. Their first week was all about orientation. Students are onboarded into the program, introduced to HubSpot tools and expectations, and connected to a learning community. Emphasis is placed during this time on professional readiness, communication, accountability, and digital etiquette in remote working environments. Training sessions in week two through four really focused on facilitating the connection between HubSpot experts. Students receive in-depth AI marketing tools, customer relationship management strategies, and digital campaign design. Homework is assigned also during this time and it includes applying new tools to simulated business scenarios, building learner confidence and competence. Weeks five, students are matched with real HubSpot clients, small businesses, nonprofits, really their client base, and assigned scoped marketing projects. They participate in client meetings and collaborate asynchronously and receive feedback as part of a team. This portion bridges classroom to career, offering tangible deliverables for resumes and portfolios for each student. Upon successful submission of the final project, each student earns a stipend validating their time and effort. The students also receive a digital credential from HubSpot, which they can showcase on their social media profiles and leverage in job applications. Additional benefits include professional exposure, right? We know that this has always been a commitment of, 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 of Calbright, right? Firsthand experience working with real employers. It improves and expands on their network, their network-building opportunities to form connection with peers, professionals, and potential future employer. And also it builds confidence. It boosts that confidence. So students have the self-assurance in using digital tools and having career experience as well. Next slide. Student outcomes and demographics are really important. The interest in this pilot was in very much high demand. As many as 372 students from across 38 California community colleges submitted interest forms. After a thorough internal review and student eligibility process, 137 Calbright students were identified and recommended to HubSpot. HubSpot accepted 98% of Calbright students. And of the students that were recommended for the sister community colleges, 142 from sister colleges were accepted by HubSpot and to the micro internship program. As of their final weeks in the micro internship program, 104 Calbright students and 92 sister college students were nearing completion. This pilot demonstrates our commitment to offering greater opportunities across the system. Next slide. Important to note, reflected in Calbright's applicant pool is our commitment to supporting underserved adult learners. Age ranges, still in the mid-30s, gender representation, greater than 50% women, race and ethnicity, 41% Latinx, 36% Asian, 20% African-American. And next slide, the community impact is also very significant. Calbright students represented 26 counties across the state, which speaks to both the demand for more work-based learning opportunities, but also it demonstrates how a statewide community college like Calbright can scale work-based learning through technology platforms and inter-agency collaboration. Next slide. You'll recall in November 2024, Calbright announced that it had been designated for the first time by the California Division of Apprenticeship Standards as a California pre-apprenticeship provider, allowing Calbright to connect our educational workforce programs with premier apprenticeship opportunities. This designation ignited a new partnership with Tech SF, a nationally recognized workforce development initiative sponsored by the San Francisco Office of Economic and Workforce Development, aimed at preparing individuals for careers in technology. Next few slides. As we look ahead and build out on what we've heard here today, I'm excited to invite Nadia Adams, Senior Workforce Program Specialist from the San Francisco Office of Economic and Workforce Development, Tech SF, to share more about the potential for Calbright to embed pre-apprenticeship pathways into our work-based learning offerings here at Calbright. But before we move forward, we'll invite our partners in Ripen to, to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I'm going to have two of our partners from Ripen join us. And I'd like to introduce Mara Woody, who is the Strategic, or excuse me, Senior Manager of Strategic Partnerships. And then Eleanor Buxton, who is the Senior Manager of Solutions Architecture. And Mara is going to give an overview of Ripen, talk a little bit about the company. I think what you'll learn as you listen to her presentation is the mission alignment that we have with Ripen. And then Eleanor is going to go over very specific information about Career Bridge, which is our newest work-based learning opportunity that we just launched at the beginning of May. And so we have some students that have started participating in that program as well. But Mara, take it away. And oh, next slide, please.
Awesome. So as I start, I do want to take a second to, for something I want to say just personally is, I've worked in education for 20 years now, public-private institutions. I was the Assistant Commissioner for Post-Secondary Policy for the state of Missouri. And I worked at a foundation that worked with community colleges across the country at that intersection of workforce development and higher education. And Calbright College is unique. There are lots of incredible schools across the country. And I want to say that on record, lots of incredible schools across the country. And I've worked with a lot of them. But Calbright College, I am constantly inspired and awed by the unapologetic focus of everyone I've been able to work with at Calbright College on accelerating their learners, as Marissa said earlier. And so I just want to take a second to say that, acknowledge that, and share that with you all. And so who am I? So I'll talk a little bit more about Ripen. Next slide, please. We are an experiential learning, project-based learning company. Our mission is to eliminate underemployment. And so as you think about a lot of those experiential learning types of programs out there, they were built for very specific students at very specific points in time. And we know that this does not serve the majority of our students today. And so our model, the way we've developed it, is to work with innovative partners like Calbright College, who are working very intentionally to meet their learners where they are and make sure all learners have access to those high-impact practices and experiential learning opportunities they need for the complex world that we live in today. And so what we do with our partners is we work with them where they need us to work with them. We develop projects that are in conjunction with authentic employers. So learners are not only applying the skills they're learning in the classroom, they're also building social capital and professional networks. And they're building those experiences that employers want to see to make you more hirable today. We can work with faculty to embed within curriculum. We can do co-curricular. We really do want to dig in with those partners we're aligned with and think about how do we meet the needs of their learners most effectively? So next slide. We've been around for over 10 years now. We have partners across the United States and in several countries. We work really intentionally to make sure we have employers that are able to work with our learners. And that's one of the things that we are unique is it is very important to us that our learners are able to connect with employers. We know that it's not always what you know, but who you know that matters. And so making sure students have that early leg up as they're going through post-secondary education is really critical. And so I don't think I need to say this for anyone in the room, but it's more setting the landscape for what we're all working in education right now. Next slide, please. I want to share a little bit about the landscape. We know that 90% of our learners today are coming to college to further workforce outcomes, very different than 20 years ago. But what we also know is that if you start out your first job after post-secondary education, underemployed, five years and even 10 years later, you're still more likely to be underemployed. And so it's really critical to figure out how do we prepare our students for tomorrow while they're still students and we have the ability to do that. And so that's why Calbright is such a great partner for us is because they are continuously focused on making sure learners come first. Next slide, please. And so we know the benefits of high-impact practices and experiential learning. We know that learners have better job outcomes. We also know that they see more of a positive role that education played in advancing them in their lives. And so just as Calbright does, to establish all of these incredible programs we've heard this morning, to really, really meet their learners where they are, that increases that perception of value of education. And we know that in this country right now, that is something education is. And we know that in this country right now, that is something education is battling. And so every program you do to really meet those learners, that is helping and supporting what we stand for in education. Next slide, please. And so, but, working in the world that we're in, we also know that we do not see equitable outcomes across all types of institutions. We know that resources are many times reflective of the, what was I going to say? Reflective of the admissibility of institutions. More selective institutions have more resources. Open access institutions usually have less resources, which should almost be criminal when we think about open access institutions are serving the students with most need and are given the least resources to do that. And so we see those outcomes across institutions where the students who most need access are the students who are least likely to get it, and they're the ones who suffer the most ill effects for that. Next slide, please. And so we see that play out also in just students getting access to experiential learning, access to that opportunity to apply those skills. Less than half of the students who want access to experiential learning today actually get it. And of those, about 2/3 of those are actually quality experiences, which is why it's really important when we partner with Calbright that we're partnering with them on project-based, which means there are deliverables at the end that students are creating for employers. This is not the poor student who's stuck filing in the back room for a summer. These are students who are actually completing projects for employers, relevant projects related to their academic programs that help them with their future career opportunities. And so I just kind of wanted to share a little bit of that and the approach that we're coming in, as well as Calbright, to the programs that we're developing, just so that everyone kind of, we all know what we're struggling with right now in education, but just to level set on this is why we're partnering and this is why we're so aligned is because we all want to achieve that same thing. We want to eliminate underemployment, and the only way to do that is to serve the students who are at most risk for being underemployed. And so with that, I'll send it over to Shannon to talk a little bit more about our program and our partnership.
Yes, awesome. Thank you so much. And while we did, next slide, please. We did start partnering with Ripen a little over a year ago, and we've been bringing in these project-based learning opportunities within the programs. And so they're integrated opportunities, but we wanted to make sure and go a little bit one step further. And so when colleagues from Economic Development under Michael's team came and said, hey, we'd love to do a proof of concept to see if we could do a micro internship and create a paid opportunity for students, I said, I know the perfect partner. And so we formed Career Bridge. And with Career Bridge, really the opportunity is again, it's enhancing employability. So we want to give students those learning opportunities that they can put on their portfolio, but as well as them, give them opportunities to connect with employers and get real feedback. It's really focused on underserved learners. So we're trying to give part in students that perhaps this is a new field for them or they're transferring in to a new workforce opportunity, and then encourage collaboration. We know how important it is for students to create networks. And so these aren't singular projects, but it's opportunities for students to meet with others and do some team building in these projects as well. And now I'm going to hand it over to Eleanor, and she's going to give specific details about Career Bridge. Next slide, please.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Good morning, folks. It's a pleasure to be here. I work in solutions design at Ripen, and I've had the wonderful experience of building and designing the Career Bridge program with a range of folks from Calbright in different teams in different spaces. And so really, we come together and we do co-create that program. We make sure it suits your learner population. It suits the way that they show up and they collaborate. And so from the beginning of this year, we were working on the design and the launch of that, of that program. We've also really worked intentionally on our impact framework. And so we spent a long time designing the impact tools and the frameworks that we want to make sure that we're capturing throughout the deployment of those, of those projects. And then this program specifically has a regional ecosystem focus. And so when we looked source employer partners and industry partners, we are activating a local industry network of employers. And so our teams are connecting and engaging with local industry partners, and that will be ongoing throughout, throughout the collaboration. And then very excitingly, we had the first 35 student participants apply to take part in the cohort, and that's split between data analysis and cybersecurity. We had some wonderful interactive onboarding sessions with those participants, and then we have rolling project kickoff. So again, we know that student life is flexible and employer life is flexible. These are mostly small to medium-sized businesses. And so we roll the program out in cohorts, and we've had the first student teams. So as Shannon mentioned, the students are contributing in groups of five, and we've had those first three student teams kick off their Ripen projects on the Ripen platform on May 12. So just perfectly timed to come and show you what that experience has looked like for those, for those students. And next slide, please. Thank you. And then I just wanted to really have the opportunity to just kind of center the student voice here. We ran those live onboarding sessions. It was a personal highlight for me to connect with the Calbright students. They are a wonderful group of people who are approaching education and their career journeys from very different spaces. And the opportunity to see them come together and learn from each other was a really wonderful experience. And these are their responses to what excites you most about the Calbright Career Bridge program? And the fact that it's paid experience was the top, top response there. So the opportunity to demonstrate your skills, to build that bridge between the classroom, but in a paid experience is something that we strongly believe in here at Ripen. And some other themes there that I wanted to call out around networking, building that social capital, connecting with industry partners, applying what they've learned in the classroom, and seeing how that translates into their, into their career journey moving forward. Thank you. I did just want to take the opportunity to showcase what, a little bit of the Ripen platform. And so when we're building with, with the team at Calbright, and it's been a range of colleagues, both faculty and student support and staff services as well. And we've created a private branded Ripen environment. So this is our digital, our digital space where the Calbright Career Bridge program has been taking place. And it provides an opportunity for students to engage remotely and flexibly with their, with their industry partners. And so the first thing students do when they arrive in the Ripen platform is curate their Ripen profile. And so they have an opportunity to add their bio, add their resume, which in itself becomes an exercise in, in career readiness. And I wanted to call out two examples here. This is Brian, who's recently started a data analytics project with an employer. I think he spent over a decade at Tesla, and throughout his experiences, he was understanding that it was data that brought him joy. And so he came back around to Calbright to take the data analytics course, and that's his experience moving towards engaging with this employer partner. And then a second example here, close to my heart, is Cassidy, who has experience in, in higher ed and has spent 15 years in equity-centered innovation education programming. And again, is now seeking that transition into data. And so the first activity for them is to spend some time articulating their experiences and putting those forward to our, to our employer partners. And then a little bit of an example of what it looks like to be in the Ripen environment and to engage with, with an employer partner. So this is Amy Johnson, my, my student account here. I've logged in and I've been paired with, with an industry partner, and we've worked very closely with the faculty at Calbright to understand what is a good project fit in alignment with your curriculum, but also what is a good project for what the real world of work looks like in these specific discipline areas. And so we work really closely to make sure there's a, there's a solid skills alignment with the curriculum, but there's some challenge, and there's some new experiences, some perhaps some new technologies, and the opportunity for students to again, collaborate as a team, but to dive into something a little bit new. So as a student here, I can come into, to the Ripen environment, and I can firstly understand more about my employer project. So this is a real example of one of the projects that the Calbright learners are currently working on. They can understand what their deliverables look like, what tasks they're going to be contributing. And it provides a central spot for them to monitor and kind of run through that, that collaboration. And then really specifically, I wanted to call out, we've worked really closely with our colleagues at Calbright to understand the types of mentorship and the types of support that are really valuable to your learners. And so our employers, as part of their onboarding, go through an exercise in articulating, is it, is it domain expertise that they are providing? Is it hands-on support? What, what does that look like? And we're making sure that we have the right combination of those things to support curated teams of, of Calbright learners. So my student here, I can come back and understand a lot more about the company I'm working with, a lot more about the employer partner that I'm working with. And then this becomes my central space to complete my industry project. So I've come in here. I did want to call out, we created some really intentional agreements that both the student participants sign and the industry partners sign to really drive alignment and ensure that this experience is beneficial for all parties. So that takes place within the Ripen environment. We've embedded those impact surveys. So there's a pre-survey, midpoint survey, and a post-survey. We worked really hard to understand what are the kind of core competencies that we want to capture from the employer's perspective and the participant's perspective at the beginning and the end. But we also like to use this opportunity to gather insights from industry partners. You know, what kind of experiences have they had with intern talent previously? What's attractive to them about the project-based model? And so we use this opportunity to really gain those insights as they reflect back to Calbright College. I come through here and I start my, I start my industry project. I can then create milestones. And so each individual has their own workspace, but they are collaborating on a team. And so I can create an individual milestone. I can create a team milestone, and I work my way through towards, towards the completion. At the bottom here, you'll see what's the real value add for our student participants. So by completing this project in Ripen, I'm unlocking employer feedback, and I'll show you an example in just one second. I am unlocking some digital skills tags. So all of our projects are tagged with the skills that students are demonstrating while they complete the project, and we then call them employer-verified skills. And so it provides a really good benchmark for a student to then articulate the types of skills that they've demonstrated during that collaboration. And then I'll just flip over to show you what these look like for a student participant once they've completed their, their employer project. So here I can see these, this is a cybersecurity student who has earned these digital skill badges during their collaboration. They've earned some digital credentials and some digital badges, and there will be a really wonderful Career Bright digital credential that you'll see participants sharing on LinkedIn, sharing on their resumes. And then lastly, just to give you an example of what employer feedback and an employer endorsement looks like. And we did some wonderful work during those onboarding sessions to really support participants to understand, how do I leverage this, this opportunity? How do I take this piece of feedback and use it as I move forward? And so this digital portfolio lives on beyond their collaboration with Ripen and provides that central spot where they can come back and really have that story. As Shannon mentioned, the goal here is for these to be stackable experiences as well. So a student over the course of their relationship with Calbright can stack a few of these employer projects and have this wonderful digital library, showcasing their achievements, expanding their network, and providing them with those, a really clear skills articulation to support them in whatever's next, whether that's further education or employment. So that's a little bit of an oversight of what, of what we've done. And we have those first three teams working with employers as we speak, and then we have another three teams joining us over the next two weeks.
Awesome. Thank you. And we're going to transition, so wait, there's more. So I'm going to hand it back over to Michael, and he will bring Deja up to talk about looking forward.
Hey, we'll try that again. And so I'm really excited to look ahead, right? In terms of Calbright's investment into work-based learning, to introduce Nadeja Adams, Senior Workforce Program Specialist from the San Francisco Office of Economic and Workforce Development, Tech SF, to share more about our potential to embed pre-apprenticeship to apprenticeship pathways into work-based learning offerings here at Calbright. Nadeja?
Thank you so much for the introduction, Michael, and good morning, everyone. So grateful to be in Sacramento today. It's a little bit chilly in San Francisco. So the sunshine is waking me up a bit. As Michael mentioned, I'm Nadeja Adams with San Francisco's Office of Economic and Workforce Development. I sit on our Tech SF initiative. So we receive funding from the city and county of San Francisco to fund a consortium of nonprofit training providers throughout the Bay Area to provide fundamental technical skills training to primarily underemployed and unemployed individuals in the region. So next slide. Skilling Up, that is our focus right now, right? So as I mentioned, San Francisco's Office of Economic and Workforce Development curates RFPs that we open every fiscal year, where training providers can apply to receive grants that will cover the cost of their training. And in this upcoming fiscal year, we are really drilling down on connecting all of those nonprofits that are registered as pre-apprenticeship providers with the Division of Apprenticeship Standards with pathways to pre-apprenticeship projects. Next slide, please. Tech SF overview. So by a show of hands, I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with our initiative, but we fund three core fundamental nonprofit training providers, including Mission Economic Development Agency, Jewish Vocational Services, and Dev Mission, all three of which are providing entry points for folks that don't have the means, right? To enroll in a college or an expensive boot camp, for instance, with that access to, to, to growing careers in San Francisco. Next slide, please. And we have an apprenticeship program, which is really, really exciting. So at the end of that pre-apprenticeship training, our North Star goal, which is really across the board in workforce development, is to transition all of those individuals that are acquiring the fundamental IT support, software development, hardware support skills into our sponsored Department of Labor Recognized Apprenticeship Program. Up on the screen are the three, or I'm sorry, the 10 different occupational pathways that are registered to date. So we have software engineering, database technician, digital marketing specialist, IT support technician, product designer, tech sales, data scientist, UX designer, digital video editor, and IT analyst. Next slide, please. As Michael mentioned earlier, we're very excited to have brought Calbright on as an additional pre-apprenticeship training provider. So what this means is, in addition to the three fundamental skills training providers that I just overviewed in the previous slide, at the completion of that training, we want to funnel those folks into Calbright College's fundamental trainings so that they are able to have access to stackable credentials. Next slide, please. These are the three, the three courses that we've registered with the Division of Apprenticeship Standards to date, IT support, cybersecurity, and data analysis training, all three of which are supposed to serve as complementary trainings to our IT support technician, cybersecurity, AI product slash data, pre-apprenticeship project roles. Next slide, please. So what is the pre-apprenticeship pathway? This just pretty much maps out for you all what the journeys look like for our graduates from Dev Mission and Mission Economic Development Agency. So the first step is the four-to-six-month training. That is the step in which the pre-apprentices are acquiring the foundational technical skills. At the completion of that training, we are transitioning those folks into real-world projects with employers. Those are to occur over a 12-week duration in which we are actually drawing down from our own funding to cover the stipends for those folks. What I'm most excited about is during that pre-apprenticeship on-the-job experience, those pre-apprentices will be able to go through Calbright training concurrently, right? So if you think about an apprenticeship model, it's curated on-the-job learning, related technical instruction. We are taking that and scaling it down to a micro level, right? Because going straight to apprenticeship with employers can be a hard sell. So what we're saying is, we get that. Let's start with a 12-week, low-risk opportunity. We're going to cover the stipends with our own money, give these folks a real chance to show their skills on the job, apply all the fundamental skills they've learned on a practical level. And at the end, our North Star goal is the conversion, hopefully, right? So next slide, please. Benefits for Calbright College. Expand talent pipeline. We are so thrilled to be able to provide all of the wonderful folks that go through our funded training programs with access to stackable credentials. Many of them graduate from Dev Mission or Mission Economic Development Agency with very fundamental Google IT Support Certificate training or Coursera course, and they say, what's the next step, right? I want to go into cybersecurity. How do I get access to CompTIA A+ or Security Plus? And so those are all of the credentials that we will be providing access to through our partnership with Calbright College. The next piece is employer-backed learning. Not the next slide, but the next piece on the previous slide. Thank you so much. Employer-backed learning. I always say that workforce development does not exist if we don't have employer partnerships. Our North Star goal is to make sure that our training programs are connecting our participants with that real-world exposure and opportunity. And then lastly, a strength in reputation. So this is our very first pilot. I think we'll have a lot of learnings coming out of this in terms of the viability of pre-apprenticeship projects, this micro apprenticeship conception. And at the end, be able to really show a strong return on investment that makes a strong proof of concept for us to continue acquiring more funding to cover the stipends for the consortium of, of training providers that we serve. Next slide, please. Next steps. This is a very concise timeline. Right now, we just graduated our Meta and Dev Mission pre-apprenticeship cohorts end of May. The next step is the pre-apprenticeship projects, which I am working tirelessly right now to enroll all of those folks into. And, and once they enroll in those projects with the employers, the goal is to have them enroll in Calbright's three registered pre-apprenticeship trainings concurrently. And at the end, work with the employers to assess their on-the-job performance for potential conversion into one of Tech SF's three registered apprenticeship occupations. That concludes today's presentation. If you have any questions, if you know where to find me, look me up on LinkedIn. But thank you all for having us today.
Thank you so much, Nadia, and thank you, you know, to your broader colleagues at the San Francisco Office of Workforce and Economic Development. We at Calbright, we really believe in regional investment, and so I think this partnership really speaks to that commitment. I also want to invite my colleague, Dr. McCarty, to come back up in the event that there are questions and really acknowledge Ripon as well as another premier partner doing so much work on behalf of our students. And we're happy to take your questions.
Thank you very much. I'll just do a quick time check, since we all still have PTSD from yesterday. Team, we have about 26 minutes left and a few more agenda items, so I look forward to a robust discussion, but everyone just be mindful. On that note, Trustee Williams.
Quick question, this is exciting what you all are doing. How are you keeping the employers engaged in getting them to respond on that board?
Actually, I should probably reach out to Eleanor on that one, but I know that Ripon actually does that. They have a team that is engaging with employers. And as she mentioned, there is an agreement between the employer and the student. And so as they go out and they are curating the employers and the projects, they're making sure that they understand what that agreement is and what the expectations that they are going to be, bring to the table for that projects. Eleanor, did I represent that?
Yeah, absolutely correct. And I think the only thing I would add as well is that we're building a two-sided marketplace with industry partners and with learners and student talent. And so as we connect with an employer who comes in and does one data project with Calbright talent first, they then join a kind of private space on Ripon and we see them returning perhaps for a cyber project over the next few months. And everything is happening in that central digital platform. And the program we're running with Calbright is a fully, we call it a fully facilitated program. And so we have a coordination team at Ripon who oversee all of that progress. And we have a bunch of really wonderful AI and digital tools to monitor progress and make sure employers are showing up, as we expect them to be, the same with our, our student participants.
That's cool. I got a group of guys that are trying to explore smart contracts and these kind of relationships with employers, and they're trying to create a token around getting employers to do what you all are doing.
Member Villa Vicencio, then member Haynes.
Thank you. So on the Board of Governors, we're looking at infusing global education and international programming in Division 2030. I'm grateful actually for Eleanor here, and I've been enjoying your beautiful accent. So in a way, this is actually part of, part of this as well. I see that Ripon and HubSpot have local and global connections. I saw that, 135 countries, 228,000 companies around the world. And I'm looking at, you know, serving all of these companies, transnational multinational corporations. And I'm thinking to myself, our students need global competencies, especially when it comes to adaptability, AI innovation, cultural communication and competence, which we know is not relevant just here in California, given our diverse status, but obviously the world. And so, you know, I'm just sharing some ideas out and maybe you've already considered making our students more competitive. Is there plans maybe for a global workforce badge or certificate? I know when we're thinking about career passport, you know, this is something that's relevant to that, too. We're the fourth largest economy in the world, more jobs are becoming more remote, and our students themselves are international, right? Let's, let's center them here for a moment. And I'm thinking about recent immigrants, or recent immigrant students that are bilingual, that have lived experience. Many of them also have licensure barriers, so there's also this intersectionality here with credit for prior learning. I think that is integral to this. And so I really am excited for this work, but, and again, in thinking about that global component here, I think there is so much opportunity that Calbright can take advantage of with your amazing partners. So thank you.
Did you guys want to respond to that quickly?
Yeah, we can add to that, because one of the things I'll say, Board Member, is that it almost sounds like you've been in our planning and strategy meetings as it relates to-
I have not.
That's right.
I have not.
As it relates to the potential, right, of these designs, these pilots who really provide our students with global skillsets and competencies at the, at the very end of the day. And so one of the reasons we bring in premier partners like Ripon, like a San Francisco, right, hub of technology, you know, like entities that can help expose our students more broadly is just for that, right? That, that, that global access and the clients that they support as well, having that touch. But, you know, one, one point that I'd want to elevate to is a lot of the work Dr. McCarty has also educated all of us on is this idea that these skills have to be transferable, right? They have to be meaningful and not just this moment, but over time as well. And so regardless of sector, industry, these skills that we are imbuing, you know, embedding into our students are more around communication, cultural competency, being able to have this inclusive mindset, future thinking, things of that nature that, that really strengthen them and their opportunities, not just on day one, but for careers moving forward.
I'm going to add one thing, which is, and how do they show it? So I think what you're seeing across this entire body of work that we're doing at the institution related to work-based learning and why partnerships like the Ripon Partnership and the San Francisco Partnership are so critically important is because it's not skills in isolation, right? It's, it's not just the important recognition of global competency as a set of skills. It is absolutely the ability for folks to have embedded experiences or opportunities to learn and acquire those skills and to be able to have artifacts that demonstrate it to that employer. So, so that's the real gap that we're addressing in this whole body of work. When we're experiencing a lot of the folks that you talk about that come in, especially career changers or folks who are coming at us because they are new Americans or any, any of the circumstances and conditions and experiences our learners come to us with, what we think is, and what we have, are, have gaining understanding is critically important and where that gap occurs is not just in the acquisition of a skills-based credential, it is absolutely in their ability to do the demonstration, show and tell a part of that translation to position themselves in the marketplace. And so that's, that's why the emphasis on not just kind of singular pieces of this, but the way that we think about this entire body of different ways in which you can demonstrate skills that you've acquired, but what you can do, right? What the thing that, the thing that employers want to have the greatest amount of assurance around and what evidence can we support you to develop in your time with us in order to be able to, to, to carry that beyond Calbright.
Member Haynes.
So I just want to make sure I underst-, I understand, I understood correctly. On the, in the, in the San Francisco project, did I hear correctly that the San Francisco folks, yeah, I've been watching you, I've been looking, that they front-loaded funding? Did I understand they front-loaded funding so that they could make certain that the employers, that they were, they put, they put the bet on the, okay, so I understood that correctly, which makes a very big, it's a, it's a, it's a, come on up. Anyway, it makes, pull up a chair. It, it actually makes a difference. And, and we're able to do that and show real progress, but it is not necessarily translatable to the other 115 colleges. Or is it? Because, because the, we continue to want that employer engagement, but it's, it's a time commitment and it's also a confident commitment as well relative to what those outcomes are. So-
I think no campus can do this without partners. So I think what is most important about this is that, like, two different illustrations of the types of partnerships we're talking about, and there's a number of others of different kinds that we've configured. One thing that is common across those is they are organizing the engagement with the employer side of the marketplace. And that is something that higher education institutions, if they were honest, will tell you is the most impossible and challenging part of what they do, because the bulk of the resources on a campus are on the education supply development side of things and not on the demand side engagement. And, you know, I think constantly we get asked this question, like, what's your employer relation strategy? And, and the, and the reality is like, we are, we are working with some individual employers, and then that's great, but that is not a sustainable way based on also the compliance infrastructure of where higher educations, especially public institutions sit, nor the way we're resources institutions. And so it is really like the value we add as an educational partner in this space is to say, what are we, how are we trying to connect those two sides of the market prices? And what are the partnerships and intermediaries and individuals that help us do that? And so you see the deep alignment across these particular partners because we seek that out and that's an intentional part of partnership development, because we are commonly and directionally aligned and we each have a different role to play and a different contribution to make, to make the equation work. And so I'll stop there because I, I know you all have, all have books to, we'll have folks to, to stuff to add, but, you know, that's our why in this and that when you ask these questions about like what's efficient to do across, sure, every institution is going to have it differently and have a different continuum around this, but the reality is that th- these are the parts that we have to thread together better, especially in the public sector. And so lots of different ways to do that. We have a very intentional way of doing that that relates to the gaps that we see and then we seek out partners who look at the gaps and the opportunities the same way.
And the through line to your question also is, is this replicable, right? Can we repeat this in other regions throughout the state? And that's why we really believe in this partnership with the San Francisco Office of Economic and Workforce Development, because they are joining forces with us to create what those models can look like, right? Because we want to strengthen all of California, but you got to start somewhere and we're grateful for the, for the collaboration.
Yeah, just, I mean, nodding my head aggressively here because both Ajita and Michael are just dropping so many truth bombs, but that's exactly it. It's in workforce development, it's a multi-stakeholder collaboration, right? And I don't think it's intentionally, because we know that it's not intentional that, you know, colleges don't prioritize employer engagement. It's just historically, I think it's been a passive afterthought, right? And so we are well-positioned as an apprenticeship intermediary to make that our core focus. And our hope is that by bringing employers in earlier in the training journey, they are more bought in to talent pipelines, right? When you are waiting until after someone earns a credential or graduates from a program to send them out into the workforce to then go and pitch their skills amongst hundreds of other graduates, their chances are substantially low. One, to just get a job in the first place, but two, to get a job that's aligned with the training that they just acquired, right? And so if we're able to engage employers in that development process, they are more faithful to their talent pipelines on both sides, right? Which is more cost-effective. You're talking about higher employee retention, lower turnover. Those are all of the things that we're proactively addressing, not just to say, hey, we're placing you in a role, but this is a viable talent acquisition strategy and that is our core focus at San Francisco's Office of Economic and Workforce Development.
It also means a better skillset that the employer wants. And, and that's what, and in many cases on our campuses, that's what's missing. Employers come in too late. And when they, and ultimately when they hire, it is not the complete skillset that they actually need, and there's a huge frustration relative to that because they have not been heard. And so it's that disconnection. And that's the, and, and also sometimes from the community college perspective, you know, we love faculty, love faculty, but it's driven by their curriculum and not necessarily an openness to change the curriculum in order to meet, completely meet the employer. And that's what we need to get a bit better on. But thank, thank you so much for that.
For me, this entire discuss, no, go ahead. I want to provide closing remarks. So Member Brown, please.
I have a question. So I see here there were 38 participating colleges. I'm curious about specifically who those colleges were, what regions they're in, and then if there are, what the process was for those colleges to get involved. And then lastly, are there any areas that are not being served that Calbright could make an effort to reach?
Thank you. I appreciate that question and we'll make sure we get you the entire list in the breakout because I want to do justice to the areas we weren't able to impact. One of the things we also noticed is that we want to continue to invest resources to support our rural communities. A lot of the identified kind of regions throughout the state, the Inland Empire, right, Central Valley and others that have historically not had the level of investment to really lift the economic ladder of their populations. And so we want to continue to invest in that area. And this pilot specifically around California Workforce Accelerator helps us start that process, but we want to continue to explore models like the ones you see here today that will continue to deepen that investment. But Board Member Brown, we'll make sure we get you that full list.
And then the process part of the question, how did these particular 38 become involved?
Yeah, so we actually marketed to all, 116. There was some timeframes and timelines that may have not allowed all to participate, but we were grateful to have 38 colleges represented. And so one of the things we really want to do is as we look forward to expanding on these models, to ensure that we get 116 community colleges represented or as many as possible because these opportunities are specifically designed to showcase the model of bringing the state into our process, allowing the state like GoBiz, a state agency, to source the employer talent for us as well. And so how do we continue to bring them into the fold to lessen the burden on some of our intermediaries and, and keep our focus globally on the student?
And I will say there's, and there's really beautiful alignment because that is very much in line with the objectives of, of GoBiz and, and what the state is trying to accomplish. And so what I, what I do love about San Francisco, I think there's only a couple places, I think LA is the other place that does this, but there's an integration between economic development and workforce, because sometimes we find those two points of disconnection in some of the regions that we engage and work in. And so, you know, in each region, it's a little bit different in terms of how the, how those two pieces of information and responsible actors kind of come to play to organize what needs to happen in those areas. And so sometimes we engage both, but it's, it's always fortunate and wonderful when those pieces are already knitted together and connected together and the relationship is locally known and understood and regionally understood as to why.
Great. This entire conversation for me just cements the value proposition of higher education. I think we know our students' time is incredibly valuable, so we're going to do a lot when you're with us. We are going to help you build social capital. We are going to provide you with work-based learning opportunities so that you could get your start while you're here. And the Career Office isn't something that you visit at the end of your term. It's earlier and earlier, possibly even before you walk into our doors. So it's just amazing that we are doing so much with our time and I think that's, that's so key to the, the bigger theme of the value of higher education. So I just wanted to flag something real quick was that I saw the word volunteer and on the screen, and every time I think about that now, I think of the presentation we had yesterday from Josh Friday and College Core. So to the extent that we could build that into something Calbright does, I think that would be a great connection. All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation. The next item, I'm going to try to get us out on time, folks, so please, oh, public comment. Terry, if we could take public comment.
There is no public comment.
Thank goodness. 5.3. Ed, please run to the, the podium. Our Chief Financial Officer will be giving us a hopefully quick report on contracts and purchases.
All right. Tough act to follow, but good afternoon, Board President Aguinaldo, Vice President Rawlings, Calbright President CEO Menon, members of the board. My name is Edward Lee and I'm the Chief Financial Officer at Calbright College. I am here to provide a standard report of the prior month's contract and purchase activity. Attachments to the agenda include a contracts report with 10 contracts executed last month and the purchase report with a total of approximately $539,000 spent last month, broken down by expense category. I'm happy to entertain any questions at this time.
I'm glad one of us is happy to entertain questions. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll take public comment.
There is no public comment.
Great, thank you very much and thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you.
We are moving to constituency group reports. We have no report from the Calbright Academic Senate, no report from the Calbright Faculty Association, and no report from the California School Employees Association, but we do have a report, thank goodness, from the Associated Students of Calbright College, so I'm passing that one to Deb Hemingway.
Well, good soon-to-be afternoon, everybody. We have successfully established and sworn in all offices for the current term. Each individual brings a unique perspective and commitment to serving our diverse student body. Together, we are focused on transparency, student engagement, and collaboration to ensure that student voices are heard and represented. In the spirit of strengthening our student advocacy efforts, we are actively working to build a closer relationship with the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, also known as SSCCC. also known as SSSCCC. This connection will allow us to better align with statewide student priorities and increase our influences on policies that impact us all. In addition to these structural developments, I will be launching a series of Zoom conversations with the student body. These talks will be personal and reflective, where I'll share my own journey, challenges, and triumphs, and how education has played a powerful role in shaping my life. No matter your age, background, or current life situation, education is always a path worth pursuing, and I hope to inspire through my story. Thank you for allowing me to serve. I look forward to continuing my journey with the ASCC. In service and solidarity, I thank you.
Thank you very much, Deb. Item 7.1 is our public forum. Are there any members of the public who wish to be heard?
There is no public comment.
Great. Thank you very much, Terry. I want to take a moment, because it is Casey's last meeting, to give the rest of our board members the opportunity to lay our compliments on her. So I'll take Board Member comment on that now. It looks like Member Epstein, then Member Del Fuente, then Member Villa Vicencio.
I was hoping you'd remember to do that since you let it go on a little long yesterday when ordinarily it would have been done. But yeah, I, I think Casey's been a fantastic board member. I'm excited that she was part of our climate team at the Board of Governors. And we got to celebrate her 21st birthday too, let's not forget that, at one of our board meetings and, which I think was the first, at least in my tenure on the board. But she's been so smart and conscientious and has achieved great things outside of this board too. And I'm sure Casey, you're going to have a wonderful career and we hope you stay in touch.
Member Del Fuente.
Well, we're sad to see you leave, but it's been a great experience to be on the board with you. You're remarkable, intelligent, high IQ, high EQ. You have a remarkable future, so keep doing the great work that you're doing and, and you have a bright future ahead. So looking forward to keeping in touch and, and seeing what the future holds.
Member Villa Vicencio.
Board Member Chang was the first person, like, actually, this is sort of full circle now that I'm thinking about it. My first meeting was sitting right next to Board Member Chang and her last meeting, she's, we're, we're together as buddies. She's, she was the first board member, along with Board Member, Vice President Rawlings, to welcome me into the board. And they have been so kind and sharing with me their, their knowledge about the board and that onboarding process. And so I'm grateful for her and, and for, not just her welcoming presence and helping me get acclimated to the board, but as many of you said, of, many of you have said, Board Member Casey is just an exceptional individual inside and out, not just her service, but as, as a person. And I think that's going to go a long way for, for Board Member Chang. And I am really looking forward to see what she's going to do in the future. And I know she's going to perhaps dawn us with her presence again in the near future too. And so I'm grateful for her and for her service, so thank you.
Member, do then Member Haynes.
I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you as well, not just for your service on the board, but for the way that you've personally supported me during my time on the board. From day one, you welcomed me with such kindness and meaningful seen and included as a student member, and that'll mean more than I can put into words. Don't always agree. You've always treated the student voice in general, my own as well, with respect and care. And in your, in my short time here, you show me what it means to lead with equity and with compassion. And that's something that I'll carry with me after your term ends today. And I know I'm not the only student that will feel impact. And on a personal note, I hope we can really be friends at Berkeley this fall. It's really welcoming to know that you're going to be there too. So your leadership field will be absolutely missed, but I know that your next chapter will be just as impactful. So. Bye.
Bye. Oh. Member Haynes.
So I think for, I can speak for all of us. Our student voices on this board are critically, critically important. And yours was as well. And so I think when, when someone says, among us, keep in touch, we really do appreciate you coming back or letting us know, you know, what you're doing. Many of us are really good for a letter of recommendation. Please feel free to do that because we really want, we, we've attached ourselves to you relative to your success and where you're going and what you're doing and what you need. And so believe us when we say, say, keep in touch.
Member LaGrande, Member Brown, Member Costa.
Casey, Casey, Casey. So I just want to thank you for representing students so well on this committee. And I will be taking you up on the offer to visit your dorm next fall, since it's a new one at Berkeley that I haven't seen. I, I think you just have continued to show the brilliance of the students that are chosen to represent the student population in the community college system and your warmth and your genuineness and your, really your thoughtfulness. And we had a little conversation afterwards, after our long meeting last night, and how that felt as a student going through that process and what that meant. But I think you're also wise in your decision-making and you kind of look at the full picture and knowing there's got to be a balance between a lot of the issues that come forward, which is a real mature factor when you're serving on a board like this that many of us don't necessarily represent or really understand. So again, thank you, best of luck. And yeah, you and, you and Love will be a force to be reckoned with at the Berkeley campus, so good luck to Berkeley.
Member Brown, then Member Costa.
Casey, you will be missed, AKA Member Chang. You often sat next to me. It's, it's strange on this board how quickly things move. First you're the person on the end who's new, and next thing you know, somebody's on the other side of you. You have been a force on this board and particularly I really appreciate, well, generally I appreciate all of your questions, all of your comments. You really always move our, our conversation forward and keep us very student-centered. But particularly the opening up of that new pathway to include a student climate fellow and with your background knowledge on environmental science, helping inform all of that work, but also helping us think differently in general about when we're setting up these groupings of task forces and, and different initiatives of including that student voice to the same degree that we include all of the other stakeholders. Thank you for opening up that path forward. That's, I think that's going to have a lasting impact in how we do our work moving forward. So please know that you were instrumental not only in your time here, but that you've changed how we do business moving forward so that we can better serve all California students. So we appreciate you and please do keep in touch.
Member Costa.
I won't repeat what my colleagues have said, but I think, you know, you've added so much value on both boards. And I want to thank you also for sharing your personal story. You don't always have to, but I think, you know, your transfer journey as well as on this board, kind of how students are thinking about technology and the questions you ask always were so incredibly insightful and smart because it's been a long time since I've been in college. So I think a lot of times we talk about policy in this kind of abstract, complex way. And you can certainly do that too, but you also ground us in the reality of how it is for students every day. And so I just really appreciate that. And I think sharing that personal aspect really makes the work a lot richer and a lot more real. So thank you. And I fully expect you're going to go on to do lots of great things. And thanks again for your hard work.
Member Williams, then Member Villa Lobos.
And I won't repeat everything that's been said. I'm in absolute agreement with it. I'll offer a couple tips. Go back and watch this section and take notes because that'd be for your resume. You know, you know, seriously, and really follow up with folks. Only a couple of students will really follow up and ask for letters, you know, some have and others don't. I do think everybody here, you know, think about the networks that they have, will open doors and really take advantage of that. Journal about this experience and maybe start a blog because, you know, you just go up from here and just keep going. And so anything that I think any of us could do to support where you go from here, you know, don't be shy about it.
Member Villa Lobos.
It's been such a pleasure to be with you on this, on this board and to know that the student population is represented by someone like you. We've had some, some good conversations, one of them this morning, about some of the work that we did yesterday. And I mentioned to you that, you know, I've been there before. And to know that the student population is being fiercely supported and protected by someone like you, it truly means a lot. Goes without saying that you, you have an incredible network of individuals on this board that are looking forward to, to see what you'll accomplish in the future, but also here to help in any way we can. So please do not hesitate to call or email at any time if, if there's anything that we can do for you.
Well, Casey, you're going to join the long and distinguished line of, of student board members that we've had that have been just truly phenomenal and added so much to our board. So please do not be a stranger. I'm glad we have each other's phone numbers. All right. Team, on that note, the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete and adjourned. It is 12:05. I took you five past the end. Thank you for your participation.